Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for October 21st, 2014. We'll begin with the special order calendar. Decision items. Item number one, 30201BZ, 2519 to 255025 Creston Avenue, the Bronx.
For a motion to grant?
Good morning. Dan Eggers of Greenberg Trug on behalf of the applicant.
Chair Pomata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number two, 15207BZ, 8701 Fourth Avenue, Brooklyn.
Hello. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Eric Palatnik.
Good morning. For a motion to grant?
Chair Pomata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
New cases. Item number three, 72456BZ, 4242 Francis Lewis Boulevard, Queens.
Hello. Good morning again. Eric Palatnik on behalf of the owner. With us here today are the project architects for the application. We thank you for considering the application. We realize that we're coming back after a recent approval by your board, and we're coming back hopefully to remedy what we believe was maybe not as well-informed a decision as we've believed the board should have made on the first go-around with the application. You know, what we're requesting is an extension of term to go for 10 years for an automotive repair shop, not for five years. And I was not involved in the original application. The architects had represented the application. They really brought it thinking it would be a ministerial kind of application. They're not well-versed at the zoning board or anything. And at the end of the application process, it appears they told me everything was going well at the board, everybody was happy with everything. And some members of the local civic association who are here today spoke up and cited off a list of what they considered to be relevant concerns and told the board that they would request that the term be limited to five years. Now, a five-year term for an automotive repair shop in Queens that's owned privately by a single gentleman, it's a small auto repair shop, puts a tremendous financial burden on him. You all practiced and have practiced at the Department of Buildings, been a commissioner, and the chair has practiced before Department of Buildings, and I know you all know it's involved in a C of O. And this special permit, this approval with a five-year term required that you want to go back and get a C of O in five years. It's really, by the time he's done here, getting the C of O, he'll be done in a year and a half getting the C of O, and then a year later, he's got to come apply here and go through the C of O again. And they called me up after the hearing and after they got a five-year term, and they said, "Why did we get a five-year term?" And we went back through the approval papers, through the records, through everything, and we said, "We don't really know. It appears to be a fairly well-kept automotive repair shop as automotive repair shops go in the city of New York." I've represented a lot that are much, much here than this. This is very well-maintained. He just planted landscaping, keeps it clean. Allegedly, somebody was parking a truck on the site. It turns out, there was a truck being parked there illegally. There was a neighbor, a guy in the neighborhood who was taking advantage, who knew this guy shut down every day at 6:00 and every day at 7:00. He would park his truck there, and the next day, he'd take it out before he came to work, and the community said he's parking trucks there, and he was. Well, it turns out, we don't have the problem anymore because the guy who parked the trucks died. But this applicant is a good actor. His hours are very limited. He's open in the morning from about 6:00 a.m. Sometimes he gets in, but his official business opens at 8:00 until 6:00 p.m. in the evening. He's not 24 hours. He shuts down on Sundays. He's closed on Saturdays at 3:00. We have letters of support from a lot of his customers asking for support for the application, and we secured the support of Community Board 11, which is notoriously opposed to most any obscure requests that I make about any commercial use. And they supported it, coming back the second time to ask for more time. So I've sort of given you a lot of my spiel, and I'll stop talking on the drama of it now, and I'll go into the specifics of your requests yesterday at the review session. And to answer some of your questions, there were a series of conditions that were included in the 2004 and the 2012 resolution, and I'll just list them off, that the site is from 2004. No graffiti, no car washing, good landscaping, good lighting, and no auto body or welding done. That was from 2004. All of those are complied with, including new landscaping having recently been installed. From the 2012 resolution, you have parking for cars awaiting service, no parking of commercial vehicles. That stemmed from the earlier incident that I told you about. No parking signs should be installed on the fence. I don't know if that's been done yet or not, but it has. The architects are nodding their head. And all signage should be in compliance with the C2 regulations, which it is. So I rest my case here on behalf of this gas station. I haven't argued so hard for a gas station in a long time, but we'd very much appreciate your board's consideration of allowing this owner to have a 10-year term instead of a five.
Thank you.
Automotive repair. Automotive, excuse me, automotive repair.
Automotive repair.
I apologize.
Correct. So what we do need you to do is amend your statement of facts and findings and provide a compliance report, which goes through each of these required conditions and shows that it does comply.
Okay. Be happy to.
And then, obviously, when the C of O, the prior C of O doesn't show the conditions listed, so the new C of O needs to.
We'd ask that if your board approved it, that would be a condition within your resolution indicating that it should be included.
Okay.
And if you'd like, we'll make that formal request in our statement, if you'd like.
Yes. Thank you. And then, there was a question from Commissioner Montanez about the purpose of the shed.
That was me.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Otley-Brown about the purpose of the shed. What, how is the, how is the shed used?
That was approved last time, wasn't it?
Good morning. Anthony Cosentino. The shed that you speak of, is that the one that's behind his fence in the rear for refuge? Collection of refuge?
It's behind the enclosure for the trash.
Right. Alongside the building?
Yes.
Yeah. That's totally enclosed and constantly monitored. There's no spillage of any kind of debris.
Is that for garbage? No. My question was, what is it for? Is it for storage or is it for garbage?
No, no. It's for garbage.
Oh, okay.
For pickup. And it's, the gates open and removed and put back. So it's totally out of the sight of the neighborhood.
Was there a question about the C22 signage regulations?
We're compliant with the C2 signage regulations, yes. And we can give you an affirmative statement to that effect.
Do you want drawings that? Yeah, there should be drawings that show the C22 compliance. Okay? Okay. So with, okay, so if you can make that submission, we can close the hearing, keep the record.
I believe you have speakers, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. There are speakers. I'm sorry, sorry. Are there speakers on this matter?
Hi, Henry Euler. Good morning. My name is Henry Euler. I'm First Vice President of the Auburn Dale Improvement Association. We oppose the approval of the application to Preller Enterprises to extend the term from five to 10 years. When this variance was up for renewal in 2012, several issues of concern caused the civic to advocate for a five-year renewal. There were issues with the storage of commercial and other vehicles overnight. There was excessive signage around the perimeter of the site, servicing of vehicles outside of the bays and sometimes on the sidewalk, issue of why a towing service was operating using the address of the Preller business, and non-maintenance of landscaping on the north side of the site. There was some procrastination on the part of the applicant to address those issues, but they were finally addressed. And the variance was granted on November 20th, 2012, with all the conditions that we requested and the community board requested. The BSA decision states, "Based on the submitted evidence, the board finds that a limited extension of term of five years is appropriate with certain conditions as set forth." The civic association worked hard to convince the board that a five-year renewal period was in order, and the board agreed. Now, five months into the variance, there was an issue with a box truck parked on the site, and we wrote to Executive Director Jeff Mulligan at the time, told him about that, and also, we had seen that the C of O was, it was not in the process of being renewed. And Mr. Mulligan apparently contacted the applicant, and the box truck was removed. So we were happy that all of those things were done. But we strongly feel that the variance should not be extended at this time and should run its full five-year course to expire in 2017. At that time, if all conditions continue to be met, the civic association will have no trouble advocating for a 10-year renewal of the variance for this applicant. We feel it's a bad precedent to change the term of the variance in the middle of its run, especially after there had been issues of concern even after the variance was granted. We have no issue with the owner. We think he's a fine man. He's a good mechanic, and he has a good reputation in our community. Now, he did, they did present a petition with 324 signatures at the community board, but when we went through those signatures, only about 25 of them are people that actually live in the neighborhood. And then they're saying in their paperwork that this shows a great outpouring of community support, but we don't, you know, we feel that if there's only 25 people, that's not 324 people that they claim is showing that this is a worthy business. We find it disingenuous of the applicant's representative to claim that the 324 signatures represents a showing of community support because the customers live in other parts. So all in all, we urge the Board of Standards and Appeals to stand by the 2012 decision and let it go to five years, and when it comes up for renewal, if everything's fine, we will advocate for a 10-year renewal.
I just have one question. Thank you. When was the time that this box?
It was in April of 2013 that we noticed it, and it was parked for several weeks on the site. But since then, everything's been okay.
Did the community board vote on that?
The community board voted in 2012. I don't remember what the vote was.
I believe they were voting here again. In September.
Yeah. That's right. Right. That's true.
Oh, okay.
Yes. That's right. There was the application. Right.
I'm just curious if the community board approved it?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Another speaker?
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Terry Pumari. I'm president of the Auburn Dale Improvement Association. In 2012, Auburn Dale Improvement Association opposed the 10-year extension. Several issues made us want a shorter variance to clear up some of the conditions of the business operation in our community. We had complaints about storage and parking of vehicles overnight on the site and others that Henry has mentioned, including the issue of the towing service using the address of Preller Business. The variance was granted for five years by the Board of Standards and Appeals with the conditions that Auburn Dale Improvement Association had recommended. The BSA decision found, quote, "That a limited extension of a five-year term is appropriate with certain conditions as set forth. We ask that you do not change that decision now. Let it run to its completion." It took about six months to fully comply with the conditions of the 2012 variance, and we're still waiting on the certificate of occupancy. The applicant's representatives have made it very clear how expensive the certificate of occupancy is, especially for a small business. And we're not trying to drive the business out of business. He's been there a long time. He has a good reputation. I've spoken to him in the case of another variance of a similar business that was held before the board a month or two ago. We have no complaint about the business as service to the community. It's the appearance of the business and its place in the community that the conditions under which he operates and people see he operates as such, because we have several variances on Northern Boulevard, which so many community boards even find it hard to realize. But Community Board 11 and 7, we cross both, do have some variances. Talking about the expense of a certificate of occupancy, maybe that's the problem, not the community the problem. Maybe it's too expensive. Maybe there should be another way to get that certificate without going back to you, which is costly to the agent's, for the agent's representation. I don't know. I can't process because I've never had to work with a certificate of occupancy. My house came with one when I bought it, so it's not that kind of a thing. But I can understand that it would require a lot of investigation, a lot of examination of the site, and so on. We believe that this current variance should finish its five years, and then we'd be happy to support, all things being equal, we'd be happy to support this business for continuation of 10 years. He's been there a while. We're happy with his place in our community. We just are concerned about the appearance and the storage of cars, which have existed, and he's working on, so far, he's doing a great job cleaning up the complaints. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Okay. Can you just comment on the, or maybe your client can comment, on the storage box that was there and response to, responsiveness to a call from neighbors to remove or otherwise, as opposed to having to call the BSA to try to get them to enforce? And I had suggested yesterday that perhaps the owner can provide an affidavit that there will be no tow truck parking, no commercial vehicles.
Yeah. Certainly, we can. And just for the board's own edification, the tow truck, the number, again, this was all hashed out two years ago. It's trying to be presented, I think, in the wrong light. The tow truck, tow truck companies are affiliated with gas stations because when your car breaks down, that's where the automotive repair stations, because that's where they take you to. And they list ferries, automotive repair shops that they're affiliated with. This has an affiliation with a towing service company. They don't tow out of this site at all. There's no tow trucks on the site. But if you break down and this tow truck picks you up, one of the recommended, I broke down on 995. My car had recalled, ran out of gas last Christmas Eve. The tow truck company said, "We bring it to one of these three service stations," and those are the choices I had. GMC, recall, the gas gauge, no fun. But having said that, I'd also just like to correct the record with respect to the Community Planning Board. The Community Planning Board supported it on the first go-around in 2012 for a 10-year term, and when it came back specifically now in the 10-year term, they cite in their report, which you should have a copy of, and I'll get it to you if you don't, all of the arguments that were set forth by, that you just heard, and they once again affirmed their request or support for a 10-year term. So this has been brought before the community board and hashed out there, and they support it.
No, but I just wanted to go back to what one of the speakers said about the, some kind of a box storage container.
Box truck. It's a box truck.
A box truck.
That was the truck that was being parked, they said, in April 2013. It was there for a couple of weeks.
Right.
That's when the gentleman was parked, it's died, was parking it there illegally for a few weeks. And they keep citing to it almost two years, a year and a half later now. The gentleman is now dead, and he was doing an illegal act, which he actually reported to the police department. He was trespassing. And they keep citing to it as a basis for us not getting our variance extended.
How long do you think it would take for you to get your CO?
Eight months, probably.
Twelve days.
Twelve, 12 months?
Typically, it should take anywhere between eight to 12 months to get a certificate of occupancy.
What are the outstanding items that are in the way besides this approval?
Well, your approval, and the, then the application, and along with the survey, final survey.
Oh, you have?
All the new, well, now, it's also two with the 2014 code. Everything has to be changed.
So you haven't done anything up until this point?
Well, we had everything prepared, but once we got the five-year, I have to list everything on Schedule A. That means it would be locked in, and that's something that we wanted to get this done first before we started that paperwork. All right? Because to stop it and then change it is another new application. We'd have to do it twice instead of once with the Department of Buildings. If I started the process after the first?
No, I understand. I'm just thinking that this is not a big job, and I think you can probably do it inside of eight months. I don't, I don't see this as extraordinarily complicated.
I would hope so. Sure. Please.
You need a survey, you need a plan, you know, you need your Schedule A, and you go for it.
Yeah, but Eric Palatnik, Department of Buildings, unfortunately, and it's not their fault, and there's going to be no disrespect, are incredibly backed up right now. ERD1s in the borough of Brooklyn are taking up to eight months to be responded to right now. ERD1s in the Bronx, which we have a case pending with you right now, are taking up to six months to be responded to. I've spoken to many borough commissioners who are all short of staff. There is a delay, and it's a time constraint. It's not, if it was a simple process, we wouldn't ask you for the time, but it really, it's dogging on even the most simplest of tasks. You hear many architects and engineers here, and they'll all tell you the same thing. It's tough.
But if we within the grant stipulated a particular time to get your CO?
12 months would be fantastic.
You'd like 12 months, but it might be something less than that.
We'll hustle. We'll make it move quicker, you know? That's, we're subject to your decision, and of course, we'll take whatever decision you decide to give us. We'll take whatever approval you decide is the right decision.
Okay. So can you, how much time do you need to submit the revisions and an affidavit from the owner stating no?
We could submit back within two weeks.
Two weeks? Okay. So you could submit, submit on the 12?
Yes.
For a hearing on the, or actually, you could submit on the 5th for a hearing on the 18th?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think, actually, so I'm sorry. We can close, we could close.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. For a motion to close?
Chair Pomata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five, calendar number 32706BZ.
No, four.
I'm sorry. Item number four, calendar number 36203BZ, 428 West 45th Street, Manhattan, Sheldon Lobel.
Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel, PC, for the applicant. Good morning. We're here today on the extension of term application for 428 West 45th Street. This is an application where the initial variance was granted in 1941. The, there is a parking on the lot, which is services adjacent residential buildings, as well as a shack towards the rear of the property. Shack is about 240 square feet. Originally was used for the storage of chemicals, which, in the very colorful resolutions accompanying the grant, was used in support of efforts for World War II. And so I think that's, I only wish I could get justifications for my variances that rose to the level of a World War. But suffice to say that the term has been extended periodically. The storage now is used for materials to service the film industry, and so the applicant is here for an extension of time, I'm sorry, extension of term. The Community Board, Community Board 4 approved unanimously of the, of the grant here, as well as, I know that there was a discussion that neighbors were present at the community board hearing, and that they did support the grant and send correspondence to the board in that respect. So I know the commissioners had issues with regards to the site plan and with regards to conditions, which did not appear in the original grant, which we're seeking now by amendment. The first one is for a curb cut. The curb cut right now is a legal permitted 13 feet and was subsequently increased to 24 feet. I know that the project architect has discussed with us that the maneuverability of the site is greatly enhanced by 24-foot curb cut. I also know that the condition here has apparently existed since, on or prior to 2004, which was the date of the last BSA grant of an extension of term. So what I'd like to do in a subsequent submission is just demonstrate that to the board and have a letter from the architect discussing why they feel the 24 feet is necessary. And I know that there's certain other cosmetic issues, that there's, there was a fence that was permitted to be six feet on the side of the adjacent residential building. It was since reduced to four feet with the kind of a enclosure. What that did was that enabled the fence to come below the level of the adjacent windows, so it actually was a change which was meant to benefit the adjacent residential owner. And?
Why is there a top on it, though?
It's a great question.
How do you get to it?
I know. It's, I think, other than the fact that, yeah, it's very, it's a little bit, interesting configuration. I'll, I'll ask the owner and the architect why that, why that exists there and?
Because on the, so I'm assuming that everything underneath that cage there?
Yes.
It's like plants and bonds?
Right.
Right? Is, belongs to the owner of this property?
Right.
Right? So there's no way to maintain that?
It is very perplexing. I will be happy to address that. Maybe a tomato garden or something, I'm not sure, but?
Tomatoes would be good, but how do you pick?
Another good point. We'll take a look. I know also that there's certain downlighting which appears on the, on the, on the building adjacent to us that's shielded from the windows. I can also put that on the plan, so I can, you know, I can demonstrate that. And then the last, well, maybe the last issue, depending on the board, is I know that there was a question as far as haphazard parking at the site, and I'd be happy to take up with the owner, striping of the lot so that it would be a little bit more feasible to angle the cars. And then I know that subsequent visits to the site, I've seen that they are actually, they do park in an orderly manner. There was probably just a bad morning or something, but, but I see no reason why it can't be striped.
Right. And also, I think striping it would also probably limit the amount of cars that are on there, because when I went, there were cars parked all along the residential building.
Right.
I don't think that they should be parking and emitting odors right underneath people's windows, and so that's why I think it's better to organize them against the commercial.
Understood. Moreover, there's, there's a shed at the back, which is actually in use, and so it would, my understanding is that vehicles are able to access the rear, go to the shed, pick up materials, and come out, and so we want to make sure that's done in an orderly fashion. So allow me to go back, and I think it probably just involves a minor change to the plan and striping.
And the other question I had had to do with the way in which they access this site. Are they backing in from the street?
I'll confirm that through a?
That might be why also they need the wider curb cut.
I think that's the case.
Because, you know, to make, to back in, if there are cars parked?
Right.
It'd be a lot more difficult. So that would answer both Commissioner Montanez and Mike.
I imagine that's the case, because I think that they're backing in to the shed, loading up or unloading, and then coming out. So that probably is the justification, but I can confirm all that.
I know that you said the materials are for the film industry. Could you perhaps be a little more detailed?
I'll?
I think that the film industry probably does use some sort of chemicals, and since we're, this is a chemical issue?
Sure.
Let's just confirm that it's sort of dry goods of some kind?
Yeah. My understanding is it's dry goods in the nature of props and other, other type of material, but I can confirm that.
And I think there was also a question, sorry, about, oh, so the issue of the curb cut, so about the 24-foot curb cut. At the moment, you don't have the information about why that is really necessary, but you'll bring that?
I will, and I think it does deal with maneuverability.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. Are there any speakers on this item? Okay. So how much time do you?
Two weeks should be sufficient.
Okay. So how about a submission on the 12?
That's great.
For a hearing on the 25th.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Item number five, 32706BZ, 133 East 58th Street, Manhattan.
Hello, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board, Eric Palatnik again. We attended your review session yesterday on behalf of this special permit for a gym to renew the term, or physical culture establishment, I should say. And we have corrected hours of operation, which we could provide to you in, in written form if you'd like, or I could read them to you now also if you desire.
Sure.
It's Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 8:30 PM. Saturday, 8:00 AM to 2:30 PM, and closed on Sunday.
Okay, thank you.
And as far as, I know you had a question about the sprinkler systems, there is a fire alarm system that's in place. There is no required sprinkler system. The sprinkler system is required to be installed by the year 2019 under the, we have a memorandum from the Department of Buildings from October 26th that speaks to Local 26 of '04, and it does provide for the installation of sprinklers by 2019.
For the entire building, not just the space?
Yes, correct, the entire building.
So they will be included in the, in the plan for the entire...
For 2019, yes.
And, and that's already on their plans, it's already submitted to the...
I, I don't know if it's already submitted to the Department of Buildings or not. I have their seven-year sprinkler report that they've submitted to the Department of Buildings. It also shows compliance with Local 26 of 2004, which we could submit to you in the next...
Can you submit that and, and submit evidence that, that they are including the space in the building's renovation for the sprinkler?
We'd be happy to.
What do you want from the treatment rooms?
Oh, it's, it's therapy, it's physical therapy.
No massage?
No, there's no massage, it's not a massage establishment at all.
Do you give the standard BSA house to your plans?
We'd be happy to.
And, and with respect to the fire alarm, is it connected to the fire department?
Yes, it's connected to a central station.
So please indicate that also.
We'll indicate that on the plans.
And the fire safety narrative, right? Okay, and then with respect to the compliance report, you need to show compliance with each of the conditions?
Yes, we'd be happy to include that within our next submission, we'll put it into the statement.
Okay, great. Any other comments, questions? Is there, are there any speakers on this? Okay, how much time do we need to do this?
Submit two weeks.
Okay, so how about a submission on the 11th of November for next hearing on the 25th?
Thank you, that's great, line on Thanksgiving, thank you.
Should we close? Yeah, okay, I think we can...
What is the date, November 12?
November 11.
November 20.
Sorry, November 12th is the submission date, or here, sorry, the 11th is a holiday. November 12th and submission, the next hearing on the 25th, and I, I think we can close this, yes? So for a motion to close?
Chair Pomerano?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Appeals calendar. Decision items. Item number six, calendar numbers 57 through 11209A and 129 through 15209A, Santa Monica Lane, El Camino Loop, Moreno Court, Staten Island, Eric Palatnik.
Hello, good morning again, Eric Palatnik.
For motion to grant?
Chair Pomerano?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number seven, calendar number 2314A, 198-3551st Avenue, Queens, Eric Palatnik.
Hello, good morning again, Eric Palatnik.
For motion to grant?
Chair Pomerano?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Continued hearings. Item number eight, calendar number 16612A, 638 East 11th Street, Manhattan, New York City Department of Buildings, and item number nine, calendar number 10713A, 638 East 11th Street, Manhattan, Law Office of Marvin B. Metzer.
Good morning, Ashley Hallen of Law Offices of Marvin B. Metzer, re-requested an adjournment for November 25th. I'm not sure if there are questions on that date.
I think that's okay, so we can reschedule this for the 25th.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Due cases. Item number 10, calendar numbers 11-14 through 14-14A, 198th Street, Queens, Sheldon Lobel.
Was Richard, he just walked off?
Is Sheldon Lobel's office here? He was.
He's outside, I think he's out in the hall.
Okay.
There he is.
That was fast. Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel PC for the applicant, good afternoon. So we're here on a vested rights application, the street address 4704 through 4710 198th Street. This is a application under common law vested rights, and so the applicant is required to show substantial construction and substantial expenditures pursuant to valid permits. I think that the documentation, documentation of the record fairly well supports that there's a, a valid vested rights application here. We submitted receipts, evidence of construction, Department of Buildings inspection reports. The plans were not self-certified, they were, went through multiple levels of DOB review, and so the buildings here were finished as in 100% complete foundations and substantially completed buildings by approximately November 2006. So we were fairly well along on this building, and actually considering the fact that many times we come to the board and receive vested rights on 50% of our foundations, I think that the case here for vested rights is fairly strong in that regard. The yards text amendment was approved in or around April 2008, so about a year and a half after the completion of the buildings, the yards text amendment caused, caused portions of the existing buildings to become non-compliant. And I, and I know that the board has questions, and I have Ning Lu, the project architect, with me. I know that the board's, board has questions with regards to what would happen to the building in the event that, for example, no vested rights were found and the building would be, would need to comply, and we'd be happy to produce a plan for the board, basically showing that when you comply with the yards text amendment, which includes 30-foot rear yards here, you know, because of a changed criteria for corner lots, you'd have to take down large portions of the building, and we would satisfy the serious loss component of vested rights application. At this time, you know, I'd be happy to, to listen to the board's specific comments. I, it seemed from the comments that the board did not question the substantial construction and substantial expenditures components, because, you know, they're, they're fairly well documented. The 2006 completion of the buildings basically would normally have led to certificates of occupancy and finished buildings. Here, however, there was a prior owner, there was financial difficulties due to the economic downturn, they never completed the building, they went into bankruptcy. These situations are, are common in this regard. We've had several cases which have had financial difficulties, gone to bankruptcy. Indeed, in the Lefrak case from 1972, there was, I think, a bankruptcy, and there were seven extensions in order to allow the buildings to eventually be built, which was a vested rights case before the board. So here there was the bankruptcy, our owner subsequently bought and is attempting to finish the building. So that's the crux of the application, and Ning and I are both available if the board has any comments.
Well, there were, there were several other comments. One of them was about a comment from the Community Board that, that the original project relied on adjacent property for egress, and that property then wasn't purchased in this current application or for this current project. Can you talk about that?
I actually would have Ning address that.
Please state your name for the record.
Okay, I'm Ning Lu, architect. I'm on this project, so the egress issue is really, it's a easement that the city took at the street. So, so in the map, in the city map, it was a through street, but then for some reason it was never built. So because of that, the previous owner was not able to build anything encroaching into that street. So that was street we're supposed to finish in order to get a CVO. So that's one of the thing. But, but then because it was never built, the, the neighboring did not wanted us to build that street because they liked the quiet kind of atmosphere that's existing, so, so we were not able to, to basically pursue that. So that's one of the reasons why I think the, the property was laid there for a while, including the financial difficulty and everything, so because the, also the previous owner was not able to buy the neighbor property in order to finish that street. But in the text map and in the city map, it's a through street.
Which street are you talking about?
That's the 198th Street, yeah, 198th Street.
So the way you're planning on constructing this is the street is going to narrow down to three feet, four inches?
So, 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 no. So right now this street actually was never built long, it, it was from the text map from a long time ago. It was planned out to have the through street, but for some reason it never built out that portion. So now the, when the previous applicant filed this application, he planned to finish that street. And then the, the, apparently they have issues because, because the community doesn't want that street. So, but, but it was not there, and it's still not there. So now my plan showed the street because that's Building Department wants to see that street. So, so they, that's why we're kind of under this, we want to finish it, but we may not build these trees, we may plant it offsite, and we want to, we want to use that, that site that within our property, but is claimed as easement, as our access to the building. Because it's, it's called easement, it's public easement that city took. So, yeah, did I express it right?
So that's privately owned property?
That's privately, later on, yes.
So you have the property that you own?
Yes.
At the end of the street, 198th Street, it's only three feet, four inches wide?
Uh, no, it's, oh, you mean this? Yeah, but, but because the street was never built, actually right now it's just a plain, there's no, no street there, yeah.
According to the plan?
Yes.
You're going to build a 13-foot, 11-inch sidewalk?
We, we...
And you're going to have...
Can you show plans while you're doing this?
Oh, sure.
Very difficult to understand what you're talking about.
So, yeah, this is the plan. This was proposed, the completion of the street, that's why they sidewalk. But according to my last discussion with Richard and the Community Board, we believe that the community doesn't want this street to be built. So, so I will do amendment later on, and will show that we're not going to build this street or the curb. We're just going to keep the, this area, this private land as a access, so there will not be a curb.
But you have to give us the dimensions of what that access would be.
So that's 29 feet, one inch and a half, so that's shown.
That's at the entrance, and what about at the last house, where the...
That's the last house. So in the front, it's, let me see, so if we don't build the curb, in the front, it's 30, 40, 50, over 50 feet to the house in the front, but in the back, it's about 29 feet, one and a half inch to the house, so...
These are individual houses that have to have access to a public way, right? At the moment, what you're saying is this 198th Street is not a public way, is that?
Correct. It was considered, that's why Building Department asked us to, to make this street through, so that's why we propose this way, because that's the only way the Building Department would want it.
Chair, if we can, if we can, maybe when we resubmit, show an access plan for each of the homes, because we've kind of addressed the access, but I think it's probably not clear in the plans right now.
Right, but what it's sounding like, because it's hard to understand what's going on, that this is not a mapped street, and you have access for four houses, or maybe three, because one of them's facing 47th Avenue, you have access for four houses on an unmapped street, which means that you need to get a special approval to do that.
It's mapped street. It's on the city map, it's a mapped street.
It's a mapped, it's a street?
Yeah, it's a mapped street.
It's a mapped unbuilt street?
It's unbuilt, yes, mapped unbuilt.
But it's partially under private ownership, but it's totally...
It's private ownership, totally private.
And not all of the ownership is yours. You don't own, you only...
They don't own that street.
It's not clear on this plan why you actually own.
I think, I think we'll, I think we need to show an access plan for the site.
Right, and you need to demonstrate that you also don't need a special permit under GCL 36.
Sure.
Okay. Okay.
But I had a question yesterday about the plans that were vested, whereas the original plans, and then subsequently we got a PAA, and it sounds like maybe this was part of the PAA, and those are not vested necessarily. So I would like to know what was, what was in the original plan set and what did you change after the permit, or no, last, automatically last two years after the rezoning?
Okay, so, so what happened is that in 2010, the Building Department did a audit, and then they look at the plan and they come up with some more questions. For example, the grade elevation they think is not clear enough, the, the base plane and everything, so we had to recalculate the base planes based on the as-built condition and the, and the current survey, and shows, so, so this PAA showed the grade elevations as built, and also showed the, the more spacious interior layout for the bedrooms, because prior layout in the bedroom is a little small, so that's interior. And then also, we showed a increased side yard because the side yard's regulation, the building, we, we had eight feet, but then we want to have 10% of the street, the, the building frontage, so we want to move that wall in to, to achieve that.
So you're actually going to have to chip that?
Yes, yes, we are doing that, yeah.
And you also have to chip off to create a larger front yard?
No. Front yard is, or exists, just side yard, two side yard.
Maybe we can use the plans that show the original work that was vested?
Okay.
And then, because that's really what your, the floor is for.
Okay.
Did those actually show a different street layout for 198th?
It's the same, it's over there. You want to, yeah.
So it's, but it would be plans to show the original vested work, and then what additional work was done subsequent to that, if, if any, prior to the change in the...
I see, the work hasn't been done, it was just posed to, to the Building Department to answer the objection. So, so it was, right now the house is in this condition.
And, and so...
In the vested condition.
Okay, so all of the work that was shown on those plans that were approved by DOB prior to the change in zoning text?
Approved, that's...
Yeah, so I think all, all of the work that was done was on the prior approved DOB plans. I know that the board, as well as the courts, have weighed in on changes to plans, posed zoning change, and that you are indeed permitted to make certain modifications to your plans in order to comply with the existing zoning that was existing at the time. So here, and I think it's going to be clearer when we show a plan showing the, showing a complying development with that corner cutoff, that, that's what would need to be done to the site.
So the PAA was due to, the DOB audit?
Yes.
While you were, there were some minor modifications?
Yes.
But you'll show us the original plan?
Yes, it's right here, yeah, original plan, yeah.
So, and when you do your as-of-right drawings, that will, that way you'll clarify which are the non-compliances with the current zoning regulations, because that's the idea, we want to see how, what would happen to this project if it had to comply with current zoning?
So, I guess not...
It'll be easiest to just, it'll be easiest to just show the plan.
Okay. And then Commissioner Ollie Brown had comments about the finance.
Right, yes, because you had stated that you were having trouble getting the backup for the substantial money spent, as well as, I guess, also the serious loss in quantifying it. So being that you just, you sold the, the property sold recently?
Correct.
With the improved buildings intact, if you could somehow just estimate what portion of that purchase price was actually building and not land, that would actually help you to meet that finding.
That's fine.
And also help you to quantify your serious loss, if your statement is that you're going to lose the entire building.
Yeah, I, I think the, I understand the point with regards to the, breaking out the purchase price, that's fine, and we can do that. And I think the serious loss issue is, we're going to carry that just because there's parts of the building which would need to be removed. I'd also say that, we'll, we'll take a look, if there's a, if there is a separate GCL application required, I guess that we'd ask the board to rule on the vesting piece and then potentially to rule on the GCL case, but we'll, we'll clarify that in the next go-around.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Are there any speakers on this item?
Vice Chair, Mr. Yul?
Good morning again, my name is Henry Euler, I'm First Vice President of the Auburn Dale Improvement Association. I'm also a member of Community Board 11 in Queens, testifying on behalf of my civic. This property has caused severe problems in this neighborhood for almost 10 years. Previous owner was unable to get a CVO for the homes because the fire department would not sign off on them. The reason given was that the fire engines would not be able to turn around on the site in an emergency due to the configuration of the homes, which are perpendicular to 47th Avenue and other homes on the block. Over the years, the homes could not be inhabited, they became neglected, vandalized, garbage accumulated on the site, and the construction fence collapsed. Senator Ravela came to hold a press conference there because of the horrible conditions. Many people have been calling for the demolition of one or more of the homes because of the egregious lack of compliance to the building regulations and the deterioration of the structures over time. Now, the current owner bought the property in 2013 at a foreclosure action for $1 million, and he's asking for a common law vested rights action to the BSA. It's our understanding that in order to meet the threshold required to succeed in claiming vested rights, one of the determining, determining conditions is that the owner must prove that potential serious financial loss would occur if denied the right to proceed. The owner paid $1 million for an eight-unit complex and a large piece of land. In our community, the land alone is worth $1 million, even if one or more of the homes has to be demolished. We don't believe it's a hardship for the owner financially. He paid a bargain basement, bargain basement price for a very valuable piece of real estate. As it is, even if this application is granted, the owner will have to shave off parts of two of the homes to satisfy pre-2008 zoning regulations. We're shocked that this, that the Department of Buildings signed off on the plans, the original plans submitted by the previous owner and his builder, when those plans did not meet the zoning regulations. In addition, the plans that we saw at the Community Board hearings make us question how vehicles will be parked on the site. They have a little driveway down the back of the property, we don't know how cars are going to go in and out of there, down, especially down to the bottom house. We are also told that much of the front of the property will be paved over in an effort to have fire engines access the site. This is a sloped property. If the front is paved over, where will the runoff water go? Down to the property south of 198th Street? And this question still remains, will the fire department be able to access the site even after all the changes are done? Community Board 11 disapproved the application for... Community Board 11 disapproved the application, four in favor, 34 opposed to abstentions. In our opinion, we feel that the owner does not meet all of the requirements for common law vested rights, and we urge the BSA to disapprove, disapprove this application.
Thank you. Fire Department? Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioner is Anthony Scuduto for the Fire Department. Just today's discussion, that has made this project a little bit problematic for us. We were reviewing plans, and the plans indicated to us that the street widening was going to take place, certainly to at least the frontage of all of the, all four buildings. The dead end problem wasn't really a problem, because it was in the maximum or minimum of 150 feet in depth. So we didn't have an issue with turnarounds on this. But with today's discussion indicating that the street widening is not taking place, the Fire Department is, I guess, going to look forward to Mr. Lobel's submission of how they're going to provide access. So although I don't think we presented any letters of approval or support, at this point, we certainly would have to state where we cannot support the current project until that information is supplied and we have the time to review.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning again. Terry Pumari, Orbin Dale Improvement Association. This property are four two-family homes, which are, have been built perpendicular to 47th Avenue on a nonexistent street, none that we can see. It's only on paper. And it's not an open street, and the addresses seem to have just been created. In the time that they've been trying to work on this, the previous owner, they put in at least, I think, seven houses on the street further east. The immediate adjacent houses, meaning the next property over, which would have part of this mapped street underneath it, have been built quite a number of years before. This street that the previous owner thought that he might open up is actually a driveway and garden to a set of four houses, because the driveway is used to get behind the buildings to go into the garages. So that is already an easement for that particular piece of property. For years, this property has been a blight on our neighborhood, unable to get the certificate of occupancies, because we were told, we've been talking to, the neighbor has talked to the previous owner, that the Fire Department would not sign off on them, because they could not turn their engines around. Apparently, his construction man told him he could get them signed off on, not to worry about it. And so they never got a certificate of occupancy. Because these homes could not be occupied, excuse me, they were vandalized and neglected, and we had media interviews with the head of Community Board 11 and Senator Avella about the deplorable conditions. To us, it was, you heard the expression, "an accident waiting to happen"? It was almost a crime waiting to happen, because the buildings were open, the doors had been broken into, and all we could think of was fire or worse. Over time, they were truly unfit for occupation and a disgrace to our community. Through serious efforts with our electives, we got the buildings fenced and also cleaned up by the Department of Sanitation. They were virtually abandoned, although the owner kept paying the taxes, maybe hoping he would get somebody to buy them. They were sold at auction, and the new owner apparently paid about $1 million for them. But the new plans really bring a hard issue into mind. The previous neighborhood residents further down the end of this hill, it's a serious, it's not really angular, but it's a serious slope if you're going to cement the front of those buildings to provide access for vehicles, whether it be their cars or whether it be the Fire Department. And water runoff is probably going to be an important problem to the houses that are built east to west below them on that dead end. We urge you not to grant this vested rights. This community is really upset about the perpendicular setting of the houses, and to develop them as-is, putting cars around the perimeter of the houses right next to the fences of the neighborhood, storing or parking cars in tandem. I don't know how you're going to get them out in snow or emergency, and it's a really serious problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lobel?
Madam Chair, I just would just address two issues with regards to the previous testimony. First of all, we won't, we won't address the hearsay testimony from neighbors or prior owners. We just say that the, the owner here has actually put a good deal of money into improving the homes. We actually did have an opportunity to sit down with Tony Avella, with State Senator Avella, and we, I'm sorry, with Assemblyman Avella. But we, we did have an opportunity to clean up the site. We are regularly removing trash from the site. We are, you know, making an effort to really improve the property, and I think that there's the prior ownership and our ownership, and we've, you know, we've managed to really advance the property since the time of our ownership. I guess the other thing I'd say is that while there's issues with the community board with regards to the condition of the site, I think that as far as vested rights applications go, we're required to make findings in a vested rights application. They don't deal with economic hardship. They deal with generally substantial construction, substantial experiments, substantial expenditures pursuant to valid permits. The serious loss criterion is oftentimes added by the board or has been discussed by the courts. But we, we will, you know, rebrief the BSA on the fact that we do satisfy all those criteria. I mean, there's, that we're not seeking any zoning waivers. What we're seeking is basically acknowledgement that the buildings were completed by the installation of the 2008 text, and we would need to comply with the prior zoning resolution as it was in effect at the time. So obviously, we have a number of items we'd like to respond to. I think it would take approximately three to four weeks to do that, and we look forward to resubmitting to the board and to the Fire Department.
Okay. Thank you. I do have some questions about the fact that the buildings have been sitting there for a very long time, and, and apparently open until they were boarded up in some, I don't know when that happened. Can you just speak to, or maybe the architect can in, in the submissions, to the, kind of the status of the work to date? I mean, some of it is obviously decayed.
Sure.
So it would need to be replaced. So how does that impact the substantial completion? Because there's sort of a backtracking on that.
When we've, when we sat down with Tony Avella, he actually expressed the same concern. Obviously, for potential residents moving into the site, we had a, an engineer at the time go in, inspect the buildings, and discuss what had decayed, what was still usable shape. I'll discuss that with the owner and see if we can update a letter and provide it to the board as testimony.
Okay. And the cost associated?
Sure.
Right. Okay. Are there any other comments, questions on this? So what did you say, three weeks that you need?
That would be sufficient, yes.
So could you submit on the 12th of November? Is that too soon?
Okay. If you'll give me a moment. November 12th would be great.
Okay, great. And so for a hearing on the 25th then?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Item number 11, count the number 16214A, 100 Geigerich Avenue, Staten Island, Rimpula Associate Architect.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioner Philip L. Rimpula. This is an application to construct a single-family detached home on Geigerich Avenue. Some history of Geigerich Avenue is warranted at this point, given the comments at yesterday's review session. Geigerich Avenue is actually mapped to go past the dead end, but there are wetlands at the dead end, and in, so the street would never be built. So when we filed an application, if you look at our proposed area diagram, for 45 Geigerich Avenue, actually number 72 Geigerich Avenue, we filed 64 Geigerich Avenue, 72 Geigerich Avenue, and 84 Geigerich Avenue at the same time, back in 1996. And it was here before the board, and at the time, the Fire Department had objected to this being a dead end so long. So in front of 72 Geigerich Avenue, we did a voluntary turnaround that's actually on private property. So that, that turnaround was actually built, it's a 70-foot-wide turnaround. And since that time, the Fire Department has been pleased with the way Geigerich Avenue operates. And on subsequent BSA cases that we filed on the street, the Fire Department has granted approval. And it did, so we have an approval for our project right now. And one of the other comments were, we will put a sprinkler note on the plan, that the building will be 100% sprinkler. And our area diagram and our site plan both show existing fire hazards that are already installed on Geigerich Avenue, and they are within 250 feet of the entrance to the building.
And so you'll make a note of that on your statement of facts and on the drawing?
That's fine. One of the comments was, why are we facing Geigerich Avenue with the existing house instead of Bedell Avenue? The, the reason has to do with, with traffic. Geigerich Avenue is a dead-end street. It's more attractive to be on a dead-end street with less traffic, especially for, for young families. It's very private. Bedell Avenue, while it's a nice residential street, it doesn't offer the privacy that Geigerich Avenue would.
Okay. Any other questions about that? Thank you.
Do you have a drawing showing the street layout with that cul-de-sac?
It's on my area diagram, BSA 1.
Radius diagram. The radius diagram.
It could be because it's actually on, as you said, private, it's on private property, and I guess it also extends past, past, the turnaround is sort, is not necessarily at the end.
It's not at the end.
So you don't, when you, because that's, this is one of my questions that I had yesterday. When you actually go down the street, you don't register it as a turnaround? And that was one of my, my questions, as will this, does the turnaround actually work? Because it didn't look like you had 38 plus 30 some odd to make the.
It's, I believe it's actually at 70 for the bulb of the cul-de-sac.
So it's, it's 70 for the?
In total.
Yeah, for the diameter, I guess, of the, the.
Correct.
Right? But if you're on the street, it only looks like it's like 30 some odd feet. Because as you're driving down the street, you don't necessarily notice that there's this little bump out.
Okay.
That was just my perception.
That cul-de-sac is not supposed to be parked, right?
Uh, correct.
There were cars parked there?
Yeah. That is there. So you're saying all these proposed houses across the street probably won't be built?
No, they will prob, I don't, I don't know. They will probably be built. I don't know. That, that development across the street suffered economic downturn, and I don't know what's going to happen with that. Our office had originally done that back in 2008. We had DEC permits on it, because there are wetlands on the other side of the street also. Those DEC permits have since expired, and I do not know the status of that project. It went into bankruptcy.
Okay. Would the Fire Department like to comment on this?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Anthony Scuduto for the Fire Department. Good morning again. Just confirming Mr. Rimpula's statement. The turnaround, which actually is not at the dead end, but that it was reviewed by us during the prior cases. It was found to be functional, and we would have no objection to it. And I guess the drawings don't currently show full sprinkling, but the fact that the building is being sprinkled and everything else is, is a positive. But specifically addressing the turnaround, no, no issues whatsoever. It was accepted years ago.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers on this matter? Great. So would a submission on the 12th of November be okay?
That's fine.
For a hearing on the 25th of November?
Very good.
And we can close this?
Thank you.
For a motion to close? Chair Cole Myrtle?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montezes?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 12, 16314A through 16514A, Canal Street, Manhattan.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. John? My name is Alan Gary. I'm from SRA, Architectural and Engineering. This is my associate, Adrian Figueroa. We're representing Ponte Equities. 502, 504, 506 Canal Street are three landmark structures that were built in the 1800s. And they were used since the 1800s. There was a period of neglect recently, and Hurricane Sandy sort of brought out the forces. Tim Lynch came down, and we discussed how we were going to restore and use these structures. So our starting point on these structures and working with landmarks is that they wanted these buildings to remain exactly as they are. That is to say, all the masonry openings, all the door openings, all the roof levels, the roof heights, everything that we had to replace had to match the existing conditions. We had to photograph anything that we took down before we took it down, and then we had to reinstall it exactly as it was. So that's where we were starting from, from the structure of the building. The envelope, the openings, the condition of the buildings. The goal was that it was identical in the way that we found it. You know, given that, raising the floor level to be out of the floodplain was not something that we considered was on the table that was something that was going to work with the window openings, with the doors. Oh, and the, and the roof level as well. You know, we, we understood that the buildings were in a floodplain. And we understood, or our understanding of these buildings is that, for the most part, regardless of what we did, whether we raised the floor 23 inches or, you know, 28 inches, these buildings were always going to be at risk. Okay? So no matter what we did, we knew that we had buildings that were at risk of flood damage just by virtue of where they were located and the conditions that are around them. In other words, we have buildings on either side, we have a building in back of us. So we are, in a sense, landlocked. Our utilities are coming in where our utilities are coming in. The sewer line is the sewer line. So given those conditions, you know, our approach to the project was, how can we, how can we develop this property to minimize the risk? So we first of all want to minimize the risk to people, and then we want to minimize the risk to property, the structure itself, and we want to minimize the risk to other structures in the case of, you know, objects coming out of our building during a flood. So we looked at a couple of options, and we thought that since these buildings were originally built as single-family homes, that we would return them to that original function. So that, you know, currently, or just prior to its vacancy, there were as many as 11 tenants in these three buildings. Okay? Eight residential, three commercial. And we thought that if we could minimize the number of people here, we could keep it to three families, this limits our exposure. There's an incident, we have to contact three people, and it minimizes, you know, what we have to deal with in terms of their risk. When we thought about putting retail on the first floor, we understood that retail on the first floor had not been successful there in recent years and would probably continue not to be successful for the following reasons. One, there's no sellers. Okay? All the sellers are either minimal or certainly at flood risk. The spaces are quite small, because they're, in addition to being a small footprint, there's also stairs to the upper floors. And the third thing we thought was that, you know, these, these businesses are going to have to go in there. to have to go in there, and they're going to have to understand that their merchandise and their business would come to a halt if there was a flood. So that they would be, you know, they would stop. So if they were storing goods, had merchandise, had equipment, servers, to the extent that they could save it, fine. But in general, it would be a stoppage for them. We felt that for these reasons, you know, it would be better to put the residential on the first floor, keep it as a single family, three single families. And we proceeded, you know, and Landmarks agreed with that. And we revised and designed the project in that manner. In order to sort of further mitigate the effects of a flood on the property, we are proposing to provide floodgates surrounding the front elevation, which is the only elevation that we have access to. So these floodgates can be installed in about four hours, I'm sorry, about one hour by four men. So four man-hours. Okay? They fold flat, and so they would store in the sellers of each individual building. They come with their own hardware and fasteners, and they do not require any attachment to the sidewalk or the building. The way they work is that they get a couple of sandbags, and they put two end pieces on our building that return to the building, and then the rest of the pieces just hook in one another. And the floodwaters, you know, support and create the barrier. The flood barrier height is four feet. So that, the idea is that this flood barrier is going to protect the building, the front of the building, which is exposed from wave damage and debris. And it's also going to, since we have some low sill heights, should the flood come up high enough to move furniture out of the windows, it will also tend to block that to the height of four feet, which is about two feet higher than the floodplain at that point. This is the state-of-the-art technique now. There, these floodgates are being put on a number of facilities in Manhattan, in Brooklyn, some far more extensive than this. But we feel that this is appropriate for, you know, to protect the buildings. And again, this is really to protect the buildings. Should there be a notification of the flood, the three tenants would be asked to leave. Okay? This is not a situation where we're putting up floodgates so that they can remain in place. It's not the purpose.
Okay. Thank you. So can we go back, first of all, to what you were saying about Landmarks and Tim Lynch? Because I see them as distinct. So what was it, first of all, that the Department of Buildings was advising you to do after...
Well, there were a number of structural conditions. In fact, 502, we had to remove half of the facade and replace it. 504 and 506, the facades are staying. But half of 502 has been, was removed. The brick was salvaged. It was cleaned. It was reinstalled. In addition, the roof structures, the rear wall, the floor structures, the foundations, the, you know, the lotline walls, these were all reviewed by Tim Lynch from a structural point of view, from the safety of the enclosure. So we have these, you know, buildings from the 1800s. First thing we have to do is make sure that these enclosures are safe. Then within that, we can put our new...
Was this work done already?
Pardon me?
Was this work done already?
Some of it, yes.
Which part of some?
The stabilization, the front facades, the roof, the rear walls, the floors, the things that were necessary to stabilize the buildings.
Okay.
And close them.
Okay. So now with respect to the Landmarks Commission, let's just put it this way. You went in with an application to leave, so that you could get a certificate of no effect. You went in with an application showing that you're not making any changes to, say, window heights and things like that, right? It wasn't that Landmarks tells you not to remove the floors?
No, it was. We actually are getting certificates of appropriateness. We, Landmarks was very clear. It's not a, no, it's not a certificate of no effect, it's a certificate of appropriateness, because we are removing things.
We have certificates of no effect. What were they for?
These are, that's, there are some for the interior, because the interior doesn't affect, so we had to do work on the exterior. So we split up the project. We split up, we did an interior part, which had no effect. And then we did the exterior part, which Landmarks, we worked on that for what, six, eight months, a year?
A year.
A year.
So, okay, so that has to do with the openings, because you're changing the openings for commercial use into residential openings and so on?
We, the opening stayed the same. They wanted...
The design of the openings are different, right?
It's, no. There's nothing about the openings that has changed. The size of the opening was the same as it was.
Right, but the design of the windows.
What goes on behind the glass is different. But the mullions, the opening, the glass, thickness of the mullions, the sill, everything is as it was.
I'm focusing on the interior. You're saying that you can't move these floors because Landmarks told you that you can't readjust the floor to floor heights. But it's not that you asked them to adjust the floor to floor heights, right?
Well, if I...
It's not that Landmarks said, if you wanted to raise the height of the second floor elevation up a little bit, that Landmarks would say no. You didn't ask, right?
No, that's fine. But if we have to move the first floor two feet, two and a half feet, and then we have to move the second floor two and a half feet, and the third floor two and a half feet, we have windows that start at your toes and end at your midsection. So it becomes sort of a, you know, we want, we really worked from this is a building. We were hoping, or expecting, or whatever adjective you want, to get a variance. We said, what makes the most sense to us is to build these buildings as close to the way they were in 1830 as possible. So the floor levels, and in fact, they may have had some structural effect on the front of the building, in other words, where we had to go into the spandrel panels in terms of supporting it.
Also, I want to add that, we also asked that the roof level of 502...
Sorry, could you state your name?
Adrian Figueroa. We, I want to go back to what, Landmarks. We asked Landmarks to raise the roof level so even them out. Because 502 is really two buildings. It's 498 Greenwich and 502, which composite as one building, 502. So those two buildings' roof levels are different. They're different about 14 inches. We asked Landmarks to even them out to make it look like one building. And they refused to agree to that.
That's a different reasoning.
In fact, the headroom at 502 on the third floor is about seven foot six inches.
Right. We asked.
But that's a different reasoning. Okay. So I understand what you're saying. Now can we just talk about this floodgate? The spec sheets that you sent us don't describe the installation that you're describing at all.
Correct.
The spec sheets that you sent us require 15 man-hours, lots of supplies, permanent installation, and all that stuff.
All right. I have a letter here, or we can resubmit it, from the installer of Aquafence. I was at the pre-hearing yesterday. I said, okay, these are the issues. I called him up. I said, how long is it going to take? Do you attach it, the fasteners? What I sent you was the Corps, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers report. And I said, should I just send the conclusion? Should I send part of it? So I said, no, I'll send the whole thing. And unfortunately, there's a lot of information there that really isn't applicable to us. The most important thing there is the conclusion, which is that it works. All right? So obviously, the objections that you brought up yesterday were totally valid. Okay? And the issue that we need to do is we need to say, no, we're not going to drill holes in the sidewalk. Okay? We're not going to have to go to a hardware store to get fasteners. All right? You know, we're not going to need 15 guys for five hours to put it together. You know, this is what we're going to need. So basically, I have a letter from him, and if you wish, we can bring you the shop drawings and the engineered drawings that show how it's constructed.
Because you also didn't provide us with any plan, for one. You said that the sellers are so low as to be nonexistent, but then you said you're going to store these in the cellar. So how are you going to do that?
Well, there's access to the sellers.
The sellers are really crawl spaces. And they're about, in 502, they're about three feet, maybe a little bit more than that, with a panel to them.
You don't show how you access that on your drawings. And you also don't really give us a definitive depth of the crawl space. When you're thinking about that, you might also want to think about what happens when and if the crawl space takes on water. Right? Because I understand the whole barrier system, but you've got, before the barrier, you've probably got, you know, a sewer system that's bringing up, you know, taking on water in the catch basin. And if you were to exceed the amount of water at any given time that that catch basin can take, you're going to start to take on water. Water's going to find its way out of there somewhere, and you're pretty close to the curve. So I can see a scenario where the water bypasses your above-ground mediation, right, your fence, and is actually penetrating below grade. And if you're going to keep your materials down there, and the event is happening, you might sort of get that perfect storm thing going on where you're having trouble accessing a three-foot-deep crawl space to get your materials out while the water is rising. So you might want to think about that.
We have attic space. So we can, we should discuss that with Aquafence. And I think it's well taken. I think we need to look into it.
You want to keep your powder dry, because you don't put it in the way of, you know, the thing that's going to harm you.
Well, in addition to which, your electrical room is shown on the first floor, and it's shared with these three units here.
Yes, it's shared. And we've kept the electric equipment high. Three-four.
That's not shown on the drawings. You're just showing it in plan. So there's no way for us to know that.
We'll show a section of that.
So all your mechanicals need to be lifted above base flood, right?
All the new ones, all the new mechanicals are all above base flood. The sprinkler, the water meters, the electric.
Do we have gas coming into the building?
The gas is an existing, an existing gas service. Again, once there's a, once there is a, these are, I don't, you know, one of the reasons why raising the floor wasn't something that I was running to do is, I have been working in New York. I had a building that lost a lot of electrical equipment during Sandy. Okay? And it met code. So basically, all our new designs, we're not putting them where they say to design it. We're putting them on the mezzanine, you know, way up high. So basically, I don't see us doing things to this building that will allow me to say to those tenants, no problem, hang there. Okay? I just don't see that happening. Sorry. You know, I just, these are buildings that are in the wrong part of Manhattan, and they're old buildings, and their services could be interrupted. There's going to be a backflow preventer on the sewage. So, you know, about an hour after it starts, they're not going to be able to use their toilets. So it's really, it's not a place to stay. We're trying to make it so that, we want to get these people out quickly. We want to protect the building from physical damage. But we don't really expect a hunker-down atmosphere in these buildings. If it was a big, huge brick warehouse, you know, with all the utilities protected, it would be a different story.
You've got a roof refuge at the rear, speaking of hunkering down, that's unprotected.
Well, they, the...
And there's no way anybody gets out because you've got your landlocked back there. That's a kind of a problem.
This was something that was suggested to us in the last sort of review. And it's really not something that was designed in. It's just there. So it's not really, again, our plan is not, let's leave them in place for another couple of hours, and if there's a problem, they'll go out on the roof. Okay? It's just, it just happens that if for some, I don't know, it's just there. It's not really, there was no intentionality there to say, oh, they're going to need this. I hope they don't need that.
I understand that definitively saying that it's a refuge area. I mean, that's a term of art. It means something. It means that if there's a fire or something like that, it means somebody can go there and get rescued. So you might want to rethink how you're characterizing that space back there.
I think you need a whole entire thought-out safety plan in terms of how this wall would occur, where the panels would be stored, how, you know, engineered plans specific to your location, how it's going to be, you know, secured ends, how it's going to be secured to the sidewalk, whether or not you need any protection in the rear, how long, how long before the event are people going to be vacated. I think everything should be spelled out, including any other measures you've taken, such as the backflow preventer and, you know, raising your...
Utilities.
I think it should all be very clear. If you're going to be using these flood panels, you have to be certified under Appendix G, Section 105.
Yeah, and I think there's a local law also that came out, 113.
That there's someone responsible?
Right. Right.
Or installing...
It has to be filed. I'm pretty sure it has to be filed.
And if the uses will still require to appear on your CBL, is that correct?
Yes, I believe so. I'm just, actually, just checking for the...
I agree. It doesn't seem very likely to be...
Yeah, it's local law 109 of 13 sort of spells out all the requirements for floodgates.
Whether you're going to do, you know, a fire drill type idea in terms of notifying all tenants of what would happen in the case of a storm, whether it would be part of their leases, you know, what conditions would be required. I really thought that it would be good to investigate using the first floor as accessory residential uses. It could be a home occupation, it could be laundry space, recreational space, not necessarily. I guess I have most probable attention. And dining.
The reason that we elected not to do that is because the first floors are so much bigger than the other floors. I mean, if I had all the floors that were just the same size, then there wouldn't be that much of a sacrifice. But, you know, when you have a three-bedroom house and you have a, you know, a couple of kids, you want the larger spaces. And, you know, these are rentals, so that the landlord is responsible for, you know, if the kitchen's damaged, the landlord's responsible for it. And it is, I believe it is in the lease, is, you know, that it is, you know, in a flood area at risk. But we felt that, you know, we're trying to make these, it's kind of like, it's a trade-off. We're trying to make these usable. We're trying to say, okay, if I wanted to make this a townhouse, how would I do it? Okay? And trying to not design around the fact that it's in a flood zone, other than the fact that we're keeping the uses that we think are more dangerous out of it.
The tests, I mean, you did send us a test. We needed to look at the test. The tests show that there is seepage, right? And so that at some point, there is water that eventually makes its way into the space. So then, the seepage makes its way onto the floor, works its way up the sheetrock. And now, even if you don't have a completely, you don't have the living room floating around, nevertheless, you have damage to the sheetrock, damage to the cabinets, damage to the tenants' personal affairs, right? And one of the things that you said in the application was that the tenants won't have valuables down there, because that's not living spaces. But of course, it's their living room. That's where they're going to have their rugs, their stuff, their, you know, their chaise longue, their, right?
Well, I guess I was thinking more of things that, objects that you could move. Okay? As opposed to rugs. Okay? Would I put an expensive Persian rug down on that living room floor? Probably not.
You wouldn't, but you're, but it's different. A tenant who's renting, I'm assuming, quite a valuable piece of rental space.
But it's a...
Has a prized carpet, right?
It's a rental, and they've been advised. So...
So what do we do about all of their damaged materials? They were advised not to buy good stuff.
They, unfortunately, there are some restrictions that we're going to have because of where we are. There's no, we cannot, because it's a historic structure. See, if it wasn't a historic structure, and they said, let's build three townhouses, we would have torn down those buildings. They would be gone.
Okay, now you see...
They're not appropriate.
So that's the part where I'm having trouble. So that's the part where I'm having trouble. You're saying it's because it's a historic structure, but actually, we don't, we don't have information from you that you went to Landmark's and said, "This is a floodplain. We need to raise the floor by two feet. Therefore, we need to make the adjustments on the other floors." And you don't have to have the same floor-to-floor height between. So you could have an eight-foot floor-to-floor height, eight-foot-finished ceiling height on the other floors rather than what you've currently got. And that would still work, and you haven't demonstrated to us that you actually went to Landmark's, and Landmark said essentially, "No way. You can't raise the roof to adjust for the floor-to-floor height because of being in a floodplain." I sincerely doubt that the answer would be no. So, and I, and other, Tim Lynch was here a minute ago. It would have been useful to happen, but...
Do you think that's the case? Do you think, do you think, I don't, I...
I don't think that's the case.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I'm assuming now we need to get a letter from Landmark's about how they would have responded to an approach to, to change these buildings because it was in a flood zone.
Right. So, I mean, you know, Landmark's is adjusting to realities that we're in flood zones now, right? And so, and we're having, there's still a lot of issues with the idea that two feet is what's preventing you from making these units essentially safe for occupancy.
That's where, that's where I disagree with you. If I hit 23 inches and I say, "Well, now it's safe," to the letter of the law, I'm kidding myself. Do I believe the government knows what the height of the Hudson River's going to be for the next 100 years? They're probably not good for 15 years. Okay? That's why I said at the beginning, I don't think, I think these buildings are always at risk.
Okay, but the difference is, you're asking us for a waiver from, from the law, right, in order to accomplish this project. If you were 23 feet, 23 inches higher, you could take your risk, right? You don't need a waiver from us.
Correct.
But you're asking us for a waiver, therefore, we have to look at it and say, "There is a magic number about the 23 feet, 23 inches. That's the FEMA regulation." And the 23 inches is the difference between clearly being flooded and maybe not being flooded, where as a property owner, you can say, "Well, in addition to meeting the code, I'm going to take another precaution and install floodgates," or provide for floodgates, or whatever. But you're not doing that. You're asking us to take on your responsibility that, and to waive the regulation, and you're trying to make a case that this will protect the tenants, but so far, you haven't made it. You're saying, "Don't buy good stuff and put it on the ground floor."
The, I mean, the good stuff, I mean, whether we, whether it's commercial or whether it's residential, the issue is the same.
But a commercial...
Whoever moves in here is at risk.
Yes, but it's different when it's someone's home versus when it's...
Exactly. And we felt that it's worse for the business, because that's more likely to have more expensive material, merchandise, stuff. In addition, what it does is it stops a business. So someone no longer has income coming in, and employees don't have jobs. Okay? So we felt that the ramifications of putting that first floor out of action were worse with the commercial use than they are with the residential. In addition, we have three more people that we had, that were affected by this situation.
Unless you're entered to people who were kind of put a home occupation on...
Which they are free to do. Which they are free to do.
But then it wouldn't be, as shown on your plans, and it wouldn't be habitable space?
The, the reason, again, the reason for the kitchen on the first floor is because it's so much larger. It's not even a little larger. It's, it would significantly affect the ability to use this building well. I mean, if it affected it a little, I can make the trade-off. But again, this is, that's what the purpose of this meeting, we're sort of balancing, you know, one to the other. So the judgment that we made is that, you know, we have this expensive property, it needs to function well as a home, as opposed to less well as a business and less well as a smaller home. Okay? And we felt that at the end of the day, that overall, the overall safety was enhanced by the single tenants.
Any other, any other comments? Are there speakers on this item? Okay, so obviously, we're needing more persuasion. I'd suggest, for one, because the specs that you gave us are not at all the specs that you're suggesting, that you provide us with specifications on the floodgates that you're proposing.
Specific floodgate.
On the specific floodgates, but also to respond to Commissioner Montanez, that you provide a clear safety plan. How is this actually going to be implemented? What happens if you're on vacation during the storm? Then this, who shows up? And also, I'd suggest also looking at other floodgate solutions, because sandbags just doesn't instill confidence that, I've seen the sandbag installations, and actually...
No, no, it's not, it's not a whole...
No, it's sandbags holding up these panels.
No, no, it's just the end panels.
The end panels are held up by the sandbags. And the sandbags, and then the end panels lock together, the panels lock together, freestanding, and the sandbag holds it from the force of a jillion gallons of water smashing up against the wall.
No, actually, it's an L shape, and the L-shaped legs are into the water, so the actual water is holding the water from heading over. We'll show you the design.
We can, we can, that's easy, that's something we can do.
Because the specs show that they need to be bolted, and then in order to permit, prevent water from penetrating underneath the ground panels, there's a foam gasket that seals in place, and the water, the weight of the water on top pushes the foam gasket down, but in order for that to work and the water not to do this essentially to the panel, there needs to be the bolting to the ground, so the anchoring. So I'm missing this.
We understand we're going to get a complete...
Okay. And perhaps there's also some kind of system that exists on the interior that might provide a better seal, as opposed to relying on exterior. I don't know. I don't actually know.
Okay. Could you also give us a section showing elevation of your interior?
Building section to show the coral and...
And tell us why, show us why it wouldn't work.
Right.
It looks, I mean, from your section, it looks to me like you only really have a problem at the first floor and the second floor level. The third floor could remain, but you're showing like a 10-foot and change floor-to-floor height on your second floor, and I guess it's nine feet and something at your first floor. So it looks like you have some room to kind of gerrymander your, you know, your levels there, so that you could make your two feet at the bottom. And I don't know, maybe you do some sort of split-level thing, I don't know. But it's, at least it's a passive way of mitigating water as opposed to, you know, relying on manpower, because we all know men can fail at stuff. So we want it just to be in place and not relying on humans.
And can you just, the business of your conditions?
I'm sorry?
Show why you don't, you feel you don't need any flood protection at the rear, which is actually closer to the river.
We, we are completely surrounded by other buildings.
Give us some plans or photos, things like that.
Okay. Can you submit that on the 12th of November for a hearing on the 25th?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 13, calendar number 23514A, 4020 Atlantic Avenue, Brooklyn, Joseph Jabor.
Hi, my name is Deborah Morris from New York City Housing Preservation and Development. I'm representing the applicant, who is a participant in Build It Back. We attended yesterday's hearings and can answer any questions. The applicant's registered architect, Jabor, has submitted new plans which provide the illustration of the required street scape mitigations, the plantings. And, sorry. This is an application for a waiver of General City Law 36. This is a replacement of a pre-existing home in the private waterfront community of Seagate. It does front on an unmapped street. The closest street of Egress is Mermaid Avenue and Surf Avenue. The homeowner is enrolled and participating in Build It Back through our choose-your-own contractor model. Let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Are there any speakers on this item?
I also have the applicant here, if you'd like to speak with her.
Thanks. Thanks for coming. Good to know. I think, I, we don't have any questions. I think we can close this matter, and...
Thank you.
So for a motion, what? For a motion to close?
Chair, sorry, Chair Perman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Henson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown?
Aye.
And we can schedule the hearing on the 28th of October?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Dead 28th decision of October.
Zoning calendar. Decision items, item number 14, calendar number 6513BZ, 1224 East 27th Street, Brooklyn, Eric Pilatnick.
I thought there was a request to defer the decision?
There is a request. We just received the soil report over the weekend, actually, showing that the site is clean, and that's just been submitted to your board, actually, yesterday. It was given to your examiner, and our next step is for us to get a sign off from DEP.
Okay, so...
Your examiner is forwarding, so...
So then, do we still need to defer the decision, or we're, we don't, I don't know if anyone was...
I believe, yeah, I believe you still need to wait on DEP to issue the final...
Oh, you still need to wait on DEP.
DEP to comment on the report, which we hope would happen within the next, I can't give a timeframe, but I'd hope two to three weeks or so. Mr. Levy could tell us better.
Do you want to schedule for November 25th, then?
I'm looking to Mr. Levy, because he has the knowledge to know whether or not that'll be sufficient.
Oh, okay. At least a month, okay, so... Okay, so we'll schedule for November 25th, and if we haven't received it, we'll...
Great. Thank you very much, and thanks for your patience while it finishes up this process.
Item number 15, calendar number 28313BZ, 4930 20th Avenue, Brooklyn, Alexander Lepovich.
Hi, good afternoon. So I actually missed the review session yesterday, but last time, it was requested for me to submit a map of the parking in the area, and I've communicated with the examiner. I understand that was sufficient. I'm not sure if there's any additional questions that you may have, or the board may have.
The submission was satisfactory, but for next time, just to know, that when you indicate where there's parking available, because you showed there's a large parking lot nearby, just to indicate how many empty spaces there are on average in those alternative places.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Anybody, any speakers on this item? So for a motion to grant, then?
Chair Perman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Henson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 16, calendar number 5314BZ, 12 West 27th Street, Manhattan, Evolution Moitai.
Okay. This is for a motion to grant, but with, just to let the applicant know that because there were these sort of sanitation concerns from neighbors, expressed by neighbors, we'd like to limit the grant, the term to five years, just to be able to make sure that the place is operating in a clean condition, isn't causing any difficulties with neighbors. So based on those conditions, for a motion to grant.
Chair Perman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Henson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown?
Aye.
Item number 17, calendar number 10514BZ, 1224 East 27th Street, Brooklyn, Louis E. Garfinkel.
How you doing?
For a motion to grant?
Chair Perman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Henson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown?
Aye.
Continued hearings, item number 18, calendar number 15513BZ, 1782 through 1784 East 28th Street, Brooklyn, the Law Office of Frederick A. Becker.
Good morning, Mayor Jaltman, on behalf of the Law Office of Frederick A. Becker. We had submitted a request for an adjournment until January 6th. I'd like to amend that request to January 13th if possible.
That's fine. Okay, so we'll adjourn this to January 13th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Submission?
Sorry?
Do you have a submission?
Oh, is there still a submission?
No, we're, we're actually going to be redesigning the building. It's entirely as we are currently in contract with the adjacent property.
Ah, so you're redesigning the building, so then...
Correct. That's the reason for the request for the adjournment.
Okay, so then, when will you submit the completely redesigned building?
I'm told that I should have it mid-December. I'm giving a little room here.
So, okay, so that means a submission on, say, the 16th of December? Is that possible, or do you want more time than that?
Let's just ask for a little more time to make sure that I'm on time for your board's case.
Sorry, sorry, there's another calendar. So at the 13th, can you do? I'm just looking at sort of holiday schedule. If the submission on the 16th is too soon, then a submission on the 30th? That's kind of terrible, right? How about a submission on the 6th?
I can also submit in between.
Can you submit in between? Can you submit on the 23rd?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay. For a hearing on the 13th, then?
I will submit on the 23rd, thank you very much.
Item number 19, calendar number 22513BZ, 810 Kent Avenue, Brooklyn, Eric Pilatnick.
Hi, Eric Pilatnick. We've requested an adjournment in this matter.
Any particular date?
We could submit at the second or so week in December would be...
Okay, so submit, okay, so if it's the second or third week of December, then there wouldn't be a hearing until the 6th of January?
That's, that's fine, yeah, that's, of course.
So submission on the 16th of December for the hearing on the 6th of January?
Thank you, thank you for your patience.
Item number 20, calendar number 26413BZ, 257 West 17th Street, Manhattan, Francis R. Angelino.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Did you want to speak about your most recent submission of photographs?
Yes, and I have some larger size. I believe this is the entire collection.
Is it one set, Frank?
It's one set.
What is that?
It's a set of photographs showing the work taken, I believe, on Saturday or Sunday, showing the status of the work. Basically, as you are aware from prior submissions, in order to do the work on the acoustical ceiling, the brick had to, and their contractors had to relocate a number of services, vents, fans, electrical, and also sprinkler system, which has not yet been done yet, but a substantial amount, I think all of the springs, the acoustical springs have been installed, and the framing has been completed in the eastern part of brick, and the contractors are continuing to work. So they expect completion within two to three weeks of this date for the ceiling.
Great. So, so first of all, we do appreciate the submission of the drawings for the acoustical ceiling and beefing up the acoustical separation. And I did have one question to propose to the engineer, actually, was the ceiling detail shows the ceiling assembly very close to the sidewalls, only something like a half an inch or three-quarters of an inch, and I'm wondering what the, what's standard for if there's vibration in the ceiling, doesn't it transfer to the sidewall? Shouldn't there be more of a separation, particularly in light of what we learned about the floor testing, where there needs to be four inches between each of those slabs to allow for vibration? So this is a very small amount. And then the next question is, when would work on the test slab? And then the next question is, when would work on the test slab occur to allow for the greater height?
We can address both of those issues, and the short answer on the first one is, I guess, yes, we can solve that, that there is a solvable solution to that problem. And Jared Perlmutter, who has appeared earlier, again, no relation that we are aware of to anybody on the board.
More eyes.
You're born in California, weren't you?
That's right.
There you go.
Jared Perlmutter. So, in regards to the ceiling around the perimeter of the pillars and the perimeter of the walls, we've taken your concerns and asked, and basically, the standard was a half inch. They can go back and look at it, and if needed, can be readdressed and increased, but generally, it's filled in with an open cell sponge-based foam and insulation. So they can look at it, and if needed, that's a modification that can be made.
Okay. Because there was also a communication, not sure exactly where that was, about adding sheet rock or some kind of another layer of gypsum board of some kind to the walls. And I don't know if that we have details on that or know what that is. Is that that quiet rock, like, what is that that's going to be installed? And how does that affect the distance from the finished ceiling?
The pillars? Yeah, I don't believe that, I can check to get an exact answer for you, but I don't believe it actually affects the distance, that that would be taken into consideration as far as the amount of room that's left between the framing of the ceiling and the wall.
Okay.
So that would be factored in.
What is actually being installed?
The exact material, I can find out for you. Absolutely. And then, in regards to the floor, as you can see by the pictures, the floor is completely covered with plastic and then a layer of masonite wood. So currently, based on communicating with the contractor, for liability and safety reasons, it's important that they handle the ceiling first without having any obstruction to the flooring and having other workers in there. We've already surveyed the floor. It's prepped, all the equipment is on-site to do the necessary cuts, but they said for safety and liability issues and the integrity of what they're doing, that we'd have to wait until they finished the bulk or majority of their work before we could get in there and start wet sawing, because it's a much larger process as far as getting through clean and safely through four inches cement slab flooring.
Right, okay.
But all the equipment is on-site. We are prepared.
And then, is the gym completely closed now? Or you're, you've finished, you kind of clean up in the morning and open the gym?
What happens is, we operate the classes downstairs.
In the cellar.
In the cellar until nine o'clock. I'm sorry. We operate the gym as normal until about 8:45. Then the construction crew, as per permit, comes in at nine o'clock and begins their work until six. And then at around five o'clock, they begin their cleanup for the day, and then we operate as best we can out of the areas that are able to be performed in. As the days go and the construction becomes larger, it becomes more difficult because they've removed a lot of the lighting, electrical's underwork, so there's areas that get closed down. And currently, the east portion will be under the most amount of construction, will be completely closed down.
Okay.
As they go through stages.
And what about with respect to weight drops?
So, immediately following the last time that we were here, we initiated a extremely strict no-weight-dropping policy, as well as changed the environment and the culture of which the workouts were distributed, so that it would be less of an issue and wouldn't require as much babysitting. And from what we gather, it's been extremely successful from the management that we've done and seen on the floor. And, you know, we took, we took the discussions that we had and took them seriously and put it into place. We did a full announcement, we distributed throughout all the members, there was acknowledgement through all the members, it was discussed in class, so everybody's very familiar with what the purpose and processes that we're going through.
Great. Any other questions? Are there any speakers on this?
Yes.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Jay Ginsburg of Levin and Glasser. I represent the condominium. We don't have that much to add today. This is mostly just an update of what's been going on. I've been told by our expert, who's here again, Alan Firestein, that one of the things we'd like to have done is to see the ceiling prior to the insulation and the encapsulation, just so we know what things look like under it, because once it's sealed and insulated, you're not going to be able to look at it again with any ease. So if there's a problem, it's easier to diagnose, to know what's behind the, I don't know if it's concrete or what it's insulated with, but it's easier to diagnose a problem if you know what's lying behind it. Beyond that, of course, whereas, as the commission pointed out, we're concerned with the time schedule on the flooring. We'd like that to be done, obviously, sooner rather than later, and we don't want to see it dragging on. I mean, the test results that I think we've all seen show that a lot of work needs to be done, further testing needs to be done before they can even settle on a solution. So we don't want to see that testing drawn out and the implementation therefore lag. Beyond that, I know Alan has a few things he'd like to bring up, and I know a few of the residents are here and would like to speak, so I'll leave it to them. I'll introduce Susan Gomes. I think she's probably one of the most affected unit owners, and I'll give her the floor.
Please state your name, you'll be given three minutes.
Susan Gomes, and I live in apartment 2A, which is right above the gym. I don't know what to say. I've been here, my husband has been here, we show up at every meeting, we've explained what the problem is. The next meeting, they show up and they tell us, tell you everything that they are doing to make it okay and make it livable, and it's not. They've now just stated how the work that they're doing, they're cleaning up at five o'clock, yet last Thursday, at 7:30, I was like a lunatic trying to figure out where the noise was coming from. My floor was vibrating and my son couldn't do his homework. Now, you imagine trying to get an eighth grader to try to get through his homework so he can get through the night and get on with everything else he has to do, and he couldn't do it because it was so loud. I was then told, oh, they have a permit till 10 o'clock. They're telling us that you're, and they're telling you that they're cleaning up at five o'clock, six o'clock? It wasn't. They're telling you now that they're having no drop policy? I can show you the emails over the past two weeks, and there is a serious fatigue factor for me to try after 15 months to remember to send an email whenever I am hearing the noise. I try really hard, I don't succeed all the time. But over the past two weeks, I have had numerous emails put in about the noise that has woken us up between 6:15 and 6:30 in the morning, the thudding, the booming, early on Saturday, early on Sunday, during the week till nine o'clock at night. It's not over, and it's not done, and it's not corrected, and they're not changing. And that's the most disturbing part. Beyond trying to fix a floor or a ceiling, is the disingenuousness of their behavior and their statements to you. They are not accurate, and it is not fair after all this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Introduce Anthony Yu, another resident at the condominium.
My name is Anthony Yu. I'm Sue Gomes' neighbor at 257 West 17th Street, apartment 2B. You've heard about the noise and vibration observations that I and others have been making, so I won't bore you with that. I just wanted to let you know, as was Sue, that I had a meeting at my apartment a few weeks ago, it was around 6:00 PM, lots of noise, not noise, but vibration emanating from what appear to be weight dropping, so I don't, I'm not intentionally necessarily doubting their intentions. However, you know, you can have the letter of the law and the spirit of the law, and people make mistakes and accidents happen, and yet we continue to live through it. I understand that this is an iterative process for the gym to try to figure out how to insulate, you know, the noise and vibration, but I guess I'm just here to implore you once again, I don't necessarily want to take time off work to be here for the third time, but that we continue to experience it, and hopefully, it's, they will have the fire under their feet to act a little bit more quickly. Thank you.
Alan Firestein of Acoustalog.
I just wanted to suggest to the people in the gym in front of the BSA that they get Wilson Ehrig to review the plans and the implementation and the supervision of what's going on right now, particularly what I heard about open cell foam a few minutes ago. Make sure that the hangers are done right is something they should review. Again, we requested that we could have access to see this before they stuff in insulation or put sheet rock up, because once you do that, I don't have x-ray vision. And there's been no mention of the columns, and I just want to point out that remember that Wilson Ehrig's report is basically, we suggest we test this, we suggest we test that, that's their report. But I do recommend that they be the ones to review at this point, before it's too late, the details that I saw in that plan.
We have no other speakers?
Thank you.
Please restate your name.
Frank Angelino. I think we're making progress at the last hearing. You heard criticism of Wilson Ehrig, our vibration expert, and at this hearing, we're hearing a plea to get them involved more heavily than they've already been involved. So I think there's progress. We also welcome the attorneys suggesting about coming in and looking at the ceiling. I assume that that also is coupled with an interest to participate in the construction, financing of the construction, so we welcome, we welcome that suggestion. Jared Perlmutter has some, has something to say specifically regarding some of the testimony you've just heard. Thank you.
Okay, just one second. Can you also make sure that photographs are taken during the construction process so that we can see how the ceiling assembly is put together?
At what point?
It's normal to do periodic photographs. They could do daily photographs, every couple of days, that kind of thing. So you're really seeing...
Progress photographs.
Right.
Will have them taken, thank you.
Jared Perlmutter. I just wanted to clarify that 100% everything we are saying is genuine. We have just as much at stake and on the table with this location as anyone does that's living in the facility. There's nothing more that we want than to make a happy environment for everyone. We are not dropping. It is possible that they're hearing other noises, not saying they're not coming from us, but it's possible that there's other noise being generated that is just now assumed to be related to dropping. It's as hypersensitive since the last meeting that I can walk around when there's nothing going on in the gym, and I can hear them walking around their apartments, closing doors, so it is a very poorly constructed building as far as STC is concerned. So, we, are we at fault for producing noise? Yes. Is it from a disingenuine, negative place? No, we're just, we're just being. I'm certain that they could possibly be hearing noise when the cleaning crew is in there, vacuuming, moving things around, things that are natural, that occur in a standard space, not by dropping heavy weights and heavy loads. If someone were to come down, I think you would recognize that. I know that when there was construction going on above us, we were filing reverse complaints, not because we're angry and it's disturbing our day, but we figure like, well, they're complaining that we're just operating and being, we should let them know that we can hear them, you know? So it's not a one-way street. It's not like we never hear a thing out of them and we're just clopping around. And if I were in my office, and as I've been, we can hear them. We can hear the construction, we can hear people walking around at night, we can hear loud televisions and music going, but because, and this is just maybe the unfortunate thing, it doesn't affect our way of life, we don't file the complaints. And not that we would start, because this isn't a tennis match of who can complain more. But I do want to make that known publicly. There is an issue where we can hear them, which is obvious why they can hear us. And so that, we believe, is going to be the remedy, we hope, by the $423,000 in invoice receipts that we have for the ceiling, we part of the solution, not including the next step, which is the floor. And it isn't our intention to drag it out. As we drag it out, competitors open around us. There are three new facilities that have already opened, supposedly and hopefully with their BSAs in line, that are operating with the exact same facilities we do, in similar buildings, in similar situations that we are. So we know we can get to an end resolution. Maybe they have less sensitive tenants, maybe they've just been more fortunate in the structure and construction of their building, but we know we can get there. And it's just a matter of taking all the action. And this isn't a situation where we're trying to drag it out. We don't want to waste your time, we don't want to make them more upset. We already get heckled by them when they walk by us during the day, they heckle our members, I was heckled this morning, you know, and I just didn't think that that's how adults behave, but I guess it is. And we want this just to end and move on, and everybody live happily ever after. So any recommendations that can be made, opening the doors, letting them come in and see the construction of the facility, as always, we've never closed the door down. If they come in and want to see what we're doing, they're more than welcome to, at any time of the day. We'll take photos every day. We're willing to listen to Mr. Firestein's feedback if he wants to come in and give his own feedback. We're willing to take it, and Wilson Ehrig did review the plans and are constantly a part of the process every step of the way.
Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Everything you're doing right now, the ceiling and the modifications to the flooring floor, all have to do with the first floor. Now, what are your planned activities for the cellar? Do you plan to do weight drops in the cellar? And did you do any testing to make sure that those vibrations are not being transmitted?
Yes. So what we've done is, in the base cellar, as even we've tested in previous pass, in previous, the platforms that we use down there do abate the vibration and sound to prevent the transmission upstairs, is what we found through testing. We do have other steps that we can take, once the ceiling is in place, that will allow us to better seal the basement, and that's also in like a third stage, but really can't be done until the ceiling is done upstairs, and we do the new tests. But it's not a process that will take three weeks, it's not something that's going to require a lot of delays.
So you want to do weight drops on the first floor and in the cellar, ultimately?
So saying weight drops is a little bit of a misunderstanding of what we do. It's to be able to relieve yourself of the load if it's under unsafe conditions, right? Just putting the weight down. Like, weight dropping is a little bit of an incorrect term. It's not like people are throwing them intentionally down, it's not part of the workout.
You let them drop?
We let them drop the weight.
Okay. So, but you intend to do that on the first floor and in the cellar?
Yes, ma'am.
So my concern is just, you know, it sounds to me like you're on the right track on the first floor. My concern is just that when it comes time to, you know, close this case, that there might still be some concerns about cellar and, you know, you had these, you say in platform...
Yes, ma'am.
Those are things we heard about a long time ago, when people have to carry them out and put them on the floor, and we heard that, you know, sometimes the weights bounce off the platform, and I just want to know if that's what you continue to intend to use, intend to continue to use?
Yes. In the basement, it's not an issue when we use the platforms, and from a safety point, it's not an issue. We've also beefed them up and created other situations around them, and as well as educated the members on how to use them. So unfortunately, everybody was affected in the learning curve because there was the excess noise and accidents, but they've come to a point, and again, we can test this over and over and over again, because from the tests we did, weight dropping in the basement never caused the issue. It was always on the first floor or the entry level.
All right, well, I guess, you know, when all this is done, you do your final testing, that will bear out. But I just want you to know that we did have concerns in the beginning that it was the responsibility of the patrons to pick this platform up and put it down so that they could drop weights, and that it wasn't something that was just installed.
Right, and we do do that 100% of the time. If there's a barbell involved where it could potentially be an accident or, let's say, a need to release the weight, the platform is brought out. That is 100% instilled in the culture of what goes on there. So they're constantly brought out, they're still on-site, they're still...
It shouldn't be the responsibility of the patrons per se. It shouldn't be the responsibility...
Right, no, no, we bring them out as part of what we do, yes. And generally, most of the time, when they're, when it's included in the workout, they're already out. They're already in place where they need to be. And then the, just to get long-winded on it, the final stage would be taking these platforms that are now portable and making them fixed, so they would, they would be fixed permanently in the floor, which, which is a system we've, the engineers that we use have used in another facility, and it's testing positive so far. So, absolutely, yes, thank you.
Just with respect to having Wilson Ehrig review the drawings, do you have something, a report from them that they reviewed the ceiling assembly? Because we only received the criteria and...
We could have them put something together.
Please.
Yeah, I could get something more official.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, so, we're obviously still proceed, continuing with this, and we want to see the development of the ceilings completion, and we're expecting it to be completed in something like two or three weeks, is that what it is?
I hate to make predictions based on New York City... I hate to make predictions based on New York City construction, but this is the best information we have right now.
Right, okay. So what I'd like to do is continue to get updated submissions, so kind of on a weekly basis, if you could be submitting to the board where you are on this, but on the, what's today, the 21st? On the 18th of November, I'd like you to come back and submit to us a status report and include, if you could submit sooner, like say the, even next week, what is that, the 28th, if you could submit the Wilson Earring report on the ceiling assembly. And also their response, their response to that issue about the distance between the ceiling and the sidewalls, as well as the issue of the, what the gypsum board enclosure is, what material that is, what's being done there.
We have the acoustical engineer here who is addressing that issue specifically on the sidewall-
Okay.
And the insulation material that will keep it isolated from the verticals on the building.
Okay.
So it's either going to be one or the other we'll submit on that.
Okay. Could you submit that next week?
I believe we can.
Okay.
Yes, we can.
Yes, okay. So submit that on the 28th and then periodic submissions on the, so I would say submission on the 5th and on the 12th. We want to see photographs to show where you are with the ceiling and then come back on the 18th. Oh, and does opposition need, you'll get copies of this, obviously.
We'll get copies in a emergency, we'll let you know. I do know, Mr. Firestein, if one or two more comments you'd like to make with Commissioner Willie Fulcher?
Um, it's okay. Yes.
Please restate your name.
Alan Firestein, Acoustolog Incorporated. I'll keep this to 15 seconds.
Please.
It's only about the cellar, the basement. My inspection showed that weights bounce off the pads, even with experienced instructors dropping them. My testing showed that only double thickness pads in the basement, I told you this before, avoid the problems upstairs. Wilson did not do any analysis of the basement.
Okay. Okay, so those comments should also be taken into account-
Understood.
-by Wilson, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so submission then on the, on all of those things by the 12th? So everything should be completely formally submitted by the 12th of November for the next hearing on the 18th? Okay.
And we will make sure that we give an immediate copy to the-
Please, please, it's okay. Thank you. Okay. Can we take a five-minute break? Seven-minute break.
I've got something for you. Back on the record, item number 21, 327-13BZ, 1504 Coney Island Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Howard Goldman for the applicant. If it's okay, I'd like to respond to the questions that were raised at review session I think they fell into three areas: traffic congestion, parking, and then the use itself. So I'll organize them in that manner. We acknowledge that there's traffic congestion in the neighborhood. It's not a secret. The community board was quite clear about the situation. Based on our observations, a lot of that comes from double parking of cars, double parking of trucks, loading, off-street loading from trucks. But a lot of it, we think, is attributable to the fact that there's very little parking in the neighborhood, which certainly increases the traffic congestion on the streets. And we've always believed that providing a 272-space garage is not going to make things worse, it's going to actually make things better. That's been our position from the beginning. I understand that the commission has asked for a traffic study to be done, and we're happy to do that, we will do that. We will compare the project with the parking waiver to the project without the parking waiver. And the project without the waiver will have less medical, less square footage of the medical facility, and we will analyze that differential. We will also reach out to DOT and we will talk to them about the left turn situation from Coney Island Avenue, and we will see what they have to say and report back to the commission on that point. With respect to the parking, there was some discussion about comparables. We had, of course, submitted one retail, large retail facility, and one large ambulatory medical facility. And I think the comment was made, these are fine individually, but can't you give us something that has both of the uses, which would be more comparable to what's being proposed here? And the answer is, there was one site we located with the TJ Maxx that was on Kings Highway and some ambulatory medical. But the problem was, it also had a large health club on site and it had a substantial amount of public parking as well, all within the same garage. And according to the environmental consultant, Jim Heineman, it's very difficult to strip out the individual uses and to make a useful comparison to our site. So we did not include that in our comparables. And I don't think it's going to shed a lot of light on the subject because of the additional I would point out, though, that where you have, let's say, ambulatory medical and you have retail together, the parking demand would be expected actually to be lower than if you had them individually because of something called linked trips. You know, linked trips is when people accomplish two things on the same trip. So, you know, someone could, someone could have a doctor's appointment and then before or after, they might stop in and do some shopping. So two birds with one stone. So, you know, the combination would actually, should lead to a lower parking demand than if we looked at these uses individually. There was a comment about the parking at the Pomegranate supermarket, which is across from our site. There are 29 parking spaces pursuant to the certificate of occupancy. What they actually do on that site and how many spaces are actually available and how many spaces they're using for other purposes, that's a different kettle of fish. And we have observed that there are fewer than 29 spaces available. But we just reported, you know, based on the CVO, which is what they're legally obligated to be doing. And then finally, let me talk about the provision of the zoning text, which requires that the applicant submit evidence that occupancy of the ambulatory diagnostic or treatment facility is contemplated in good faith on the basis of evidence submitted by the applicant. That's right out of the text. First of all, I'd point out that the CVO must limit the use to ambulatory medical. If we get a waiver, the text says that the CVO has to lock in that use, which we're getting the waiver for. So there's really no legal opportunity to put in another use in any event. The second point I would make is that the project simply won't be financed unless they have a substantial ambulatory medical tenancy in the building. I don't think any lender is going to advance funds for a speculative medical facility of more than 56,000 square feet. It's highly unlikely that that would ever happen. Notwithstanding, the text says evidence, so evidence it is, the applicant has been in discussions with a single user for all of the space. We can't release their name at this point. They, you know, occupy other space and they don't want people knowing that they're looking around. But we can provide you with letters from brokers or, we can provide you with evidence that there is a significant need for medical facilities within this neighborhood, that it's underserved by medical facilities, that kind of evidence we can provide. So I think that covers all the questions that were raised and I'd be happy to answer any further.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments, questions?
I just wanted to comment on, from the time you've been working on this project, have they always had, has Pomegranate always had those two trailers parked on the street?
I can't answer that. Perhaps Mr. Heineman knows.
I don't.
I don't know. But that contributes, of course, to the congestion.
Well, that's the problem with zoning zones, it's taken up by what appear to be storage containers.
Exactly.
James Heineman, Equity Environmental. I live not far from here, so this is somewhat anecdotal, but I do travel up and down Coney Island Avenue relatively frequently. What you may have been seeing recently were storage trailers that were being used to sell succas during the recent holidays. They were set, there were a number of these, succadepot.com had places up and down Coney Island Avenue in this area, occupying what should be legal parking spaces or bus stops, what have you. Regarding Pomegranate, though, my observation has been that indeed they do have a relatively small parking lot, which sometimes is occupied not only by shoppers' private vehicles, but by their delivery vans, by pallets of food, et cetera. They often will do, will receive their truck deliveries, either their trucks will be occupying the bus stop there or there'll be double parking in a moving lane. So we do acknowledge that there is a choke point right across the street from us, so it's well noted.
My concern about the left turn.
The left turn may well be, it may be a good idea to ban that left turn. All we can do is discuss it with DOT, right? Because we don't, we can't go out and block turns, but we can discuss it with DOT, see what their response is. And if appropriate, the board could make it, put something in their resolution about it.
I just had a question about sort of the system. How does the system accommodate segregating uses for each visitor?
It won't be segregated.
So how do you keep track of, you know, whether or not the medical facility is now over or under and you have, you've got additional spaces to allow maybe Pomegranate to come in and?
The way it's done is if there are available spaces, they will be made available to the public. But if the medical facility needs those spaces or if the, you know, other uses, tenants in the building need those spaces, then they'll be taken back.
But how does that communication work?
Very simply, if a tenant complains to the landlord and says, "I tried to park there," or "My customers tried to park there and there were no spaces," then the landlord will respond by making sure that all of the spaces are made available to the primary use of the building. There's not an area that's set aside for medical and an area that's set aside for retail. That's not how they do it. It's one big garage.
But there's no way, sort of ahead of time, I pull up, no one asks me where I'm going?
No. No, that's not, that's not the plan. But if there's a problem-
That would, that might be a problem, especially if you've got Pomegranate who's got all of these cars. They see an opportunity and they just start flooding your facility. You won't know until it's too late. So is there a way to kind of get your hands around that, knowing that you've got a situation that might happen?
Well, don't forget, the calculations, at least on paper, show that there will be a substantial number of available spaces that will more than accommodate Pomegranate's demand. But that's not to say that other people couldn't park there as well. It's not going to be restricted. All I can say-
Yeah, it doesn't really, I mean, if you've got, what is it, 300 and some odd at their peak time in Pomegranate and they're all in a car and you just happen to have some free spaces, they're going to suck up those free spaces and whether it's the 90-some odd that you think that you're going to have as extra, it could be, you know, you filled a lot. They could fill the lot up for you and you're kind of screwed.
If that becomes the case, then the landlord is going to get a lot of feedback, pushback from the tenants who are being guaranteed a certain number of parking spaces in the facility, and then the landlord's going to have to deal with it. They're going to have to restrict the amount of parking. I don't know of any other way-
But how? I mean, I think we want to know-
Oh, they could, they could say parking restricted to, you know, customers of the medical, customers of the retail, put signs up, and, you know, that's how they do it.
But then that would eliminate those extra spaces that are potentially, that are going to be empty according to your numbers, right?
If the demand is much higher than we anticipate, then that's a hypothetical.
No, but the scenario that Commissioner Hinkson is painting is not about the demand by the medical and retail that's higher than anticipated. It's simply that there's this parking garage that says, "Park here." Everyone's coming to go to the Pomegranate store, says, "Great, I no longer have to double park" and all that stuff. All 200 cars go up that ramp and then just the average number of medical office users come to park and there's no place to park. It's not that there's an over-demand for the medical offices, it's simply that there, that Pomegranate is taking advantage of this, or the patrons of Pomegranate are taking advantage of those spaces.
Of course, that would be a large, unanticipated over-demand by Pomegranate, based on the work that we've done. We don't anticipate 200 cars coming to Pomegranate, you know? The numbers are much smaller.
I think the observation, at least my observation, being there Friday afternoon.
Yeah.
I felt that there were far more, you know, more cars there than I think your numbers showed, that it was, you know, triple parked and it took me 25 minutes to go a block and a bit.
Oh, God.
So, you know, clearly, they've only got the 20-some odd spaces in their lot if they're using that. And people are now just sort of parking on the street and like kind of leaving their cars.
Right.
They were like bailing. It was like, okay, I'm stopping, I just have to go in and get what I want.
Right.
And then, you know, the car is just sitting there on the street.
I mean, if we don't, if this facility was not built, that situation would continue. It would, there would be absolutely no relief for that condition. So we think that this facility can help to alleviate that because we project that there will be some number of excess spaces. If there aren't-
And it probably would, but I guess, I guess my point still is, is that how do you control that? How do you keep the amount of spaces you absolutely need for your customers, for your customers? There's got to be a way to make sure that, you know, it's not about a complaint that comes from a user. It's got to be- Managed. Managed in a sort of a fail-safe situation where, you know, we know because it comes up on the computer that, you know, 72 spots are available and everything for the medical facility has been taken up and everything for retail has been taken up because there's a way of defining who my user is. And then I know how much I could give to Pomegranate. It seems to me you're not, you're not using the system, not necessarily wisely enough, but maybe you can push the system to figure out how you know who's in what spot. Maybe there's a way of doing that, which I think would help your client.
Maybe. The other way to approach this is- The other way to approach this is to have some agreement with Pomegranate that a certain number of spaces will be made available to them at certain times.
And then when that's filled, it's, you know, it's out, goodbye, you can't park here.
Yeah.
And then that would be something that Pomegranate would have to actually manage. So if you had an agreement like that, Pomegranate might have someone on-site who's managing those spaces.
Yeah, I mean, it is a management problem. With the automated parking system, you know, it's not like people are saying where they're going, right? They're just pulling in to the elevator and they go downstairs and their car gets parked. There's no real, it's not like the attendant, there's an attendant who can say, you know, "Where are you going?" or something like that. It's pretty automatic.
I think that what this, what this discussion really indicates is that your client needs to talk more with the supplier of the parking garage.
Uh huh.
Or the person who will manage the parking garage, whoever that is, and explain the problem, that it actually does need to be something where the accessory parking spaces are clearly allocated and the others become available for non-building, non-accessory use. And if presented with that question, I'm fairly certain there is a solution for it. We just can't assume that it just gets taken care of later because there's such a big, there's a big traffic issue here, so, right?
Yeah, although I would just say this, and we will talk to the manufacturer, but the whole purpose of this garage, of course, is not to take care of Pomegranate. Or not to alleviate, it's not to alleviate, to provide parking for the whole neighborhood. The primary use of this garage is to meet the needs of this facility, of this development, this project. And then anything above and beyond that is a benefit, but it's not, it's not the primary use of the garage, right? It's an accessory garage for this project. And what we've been trying to show is that it will meet the demand of the project and we think there'll be some leftover and that those can help to alleviate the area-wide condition.
But what you're, but in this discussion, what we're pointing out is that it's possible that the garage won't meet the demand of the project because there's no way of limiting off-site users. So you need to limit the off-site users so that you are meeting the demand of the project. And it'd be great if there was a way to negotiate something with Pomegranate and so that you could work this together. That way you'd have community support because there's obviously a lot of community concern about this.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you need to do more legwork.
Okay, point well taken.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Are there any speakers on this item? Okay, so how much time do you need to submit all that stuff?
All that stuff, I think we need about a month.
Okay, so 21. Can you submit on the 18th or the next hearing on the 9th?
Um...
Of that 9th of December? It could also be the 25th if you prefer to submit that.
Um, hang on one sec here. I think the, I think the 18th will work.
Okay. Hearing on the 9th? Yeah, it's just not enough time to review it all.
So it's submit November 18th and hearing on December 9th?
On the 9th of December, yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 22, calendar number 3, 2013 BZ, 8 Berry Street, Brooklyn, Eric Palatnik.
Sorry, say again, which number is this one?
Berry Street.
22?
Oh, it's buried in my notes, sorry.
Okay, that's yours.
It's okay. It's hard to keep track of everything sometimes. Eric Palatnik, on behalf of 8 Berry Street. We attended your review session yesterday and the space, that's the temporary space that the space that they're in right now is in fact code compliant with respect to egress. We spoke to the architect last night.
It's showing two roll-up gates, yes? Are they two roll-up gates or do you have some doors that actually go out there?
Doors, there's actually doors, which I could, we could have more clarified from a letter from the architect, perhaps?
Yeah, I think your drawings, just in general, I think the drawing of the new space needs to show that it's compliant. It's compliant in its egress, it's compliant as far as either you need some sprinklers in there, an alarm. It's got, it's got to be as if this was your permanent PCE space.
We'll give you the information.
We don't know when, even though we're saying it's temporary, we don't know when that...
Right, we understand what the board is trying to determine, so that way we are acting on a PCE right now and this is what's in front of you and this needs to be.
Exactly, that's his current space, he's using it as a PCE, he's got to comply as a PCE.
It does with respect to egress. I'll find out about the fire code.
Fire, I think you can have 84 people in there according to square footage, so check it out if you're going to need a PA.
Yeah, no, there's never more than 84. It's a very small operation right now.
Never more than 84, it's still more than 75.
Yeah, no, it's not more than 75. It's a very small space that he's in right now.
I get you, but if that's what your space...
Yeah, it's a personal training facility right now. It's not, there are no group classes or things like that. Usually there's 15, 20 people at most.
And make the argument and tell us why the building department isn't going to make you get a PA.
We can give that to you.
Okay, and so, yeah, you just gave us a plan and not even, you know, just sort of an outline and said temporary PCE.
We're working with our architect who's giving us, our architect's giving us some hurdles of our own. Just getting information is rather difficult, but that is the...
I understand, you know, we don't, because we don't know when it's going to become obsolete and...
We understand the board's concern. And we'll provide that to you and give you the assurances.
Okay, excellent. Okay, any other comments? Are there any speakers on this item? Apparently not. Okay, how much time do you need to do that?
We could submit within two weeks.
Okay, so submit on the, on the 12th, sorry, yeah, on the 12th of November for a hearing on the 25th?
Thank you.
Okay.
New cases, item number 23, calendar number 2814 BZ, 3540 North Green Avenue, Brooklyn, Eric Palatnik.
Yeah, they're all stated. This should be in. Hello, good afternoon, again, Eric Palatnik. We attended your review session yesterday. We attended your board's review session yesterday. As you know, we're here to essentially file for a new application for a special permit for McDonald's. It's been there for many years, but due to an oversight by ownership, they let the previous approval lapse. At your review session yesterday, you had a number of questions, some of which related to the soundboard, other questions related to the fencing, which we just handed up pictures for you to review, which I see you're all looking at, so I'll let you review those.
I think they perfectly demonstrate our concern.
The slat should be fixed up.
Yes.
Yeah, well, we can get new...
And the banner should be removed.
The banners, we will get the banners removed and we do apologize for that. They sometimes get, you know, under the request from corporate, it's a franchise, to do certain promotions and certain requirements, so they're balancing a line, but we will remove those. We will also direct the owner to have the fencing reinserted with fresh slats so that it's cleaned up. The hours of operation, we are requesting an amendment to the hours of operation. The earlier approval, we'll remedy our papers to reflect this, had the condition that it was from 7:00 AM through 11:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, and then 7:00 AM to 12:00 midnight on Friday and Saturday. We'd like to operate until midnight daily. Right now during the weeks, we're shutting at 11:00. We'd like the opportunity on the week, during the week, to operate until midnight.
So it would be 7:00 AM?
Until midnight.
This is just for the drive-in?
Correct. We could...
How long is the restaurant?
The restaurant would maintain the earlier hours. It closes at 11:00 PM, the inside of the restaurant.
Okay, and then could you talk more about the soundboard and its ability to be toned down or adjust the sound relative to ambient noise?
We can give you more detail on that I received last night. We submitted to the board in our June 12th submission, which I pulled out last night. We submitted information on the device that's there. It's a Panasonic speaker system and we gave you the specs in that. I don't have any details as to its ambient response and what, I know what you're looking for. So by the next submission, we'd like to speak to the manufacturer or specialist and get you some detailed information on that, just to...
Because that was a condition of the last grant.
Right, that they have a sound attenuated.
The speaker system needed to be responsive to the ambient noise.
Yes, and I believe it is, but we don't have, I've got a lot of details in on it here, but I'm not a sound expert, so of course I can't give you any of your answers. But we will provide to you for the next hearing.
So there were some, just some other questions that were raised at the session, review session. One was, oh, the paperwork on the sign analysis needs to be cleaned up. Another was that the square footage on the prior application was less than what it says on this application? Is that just a typo or...
It must have been, that's the first time hearing, I didn't hear this comment, but I know nothing has changed, that the building is, it's the same building and there's been no change to the structure itself.
So if you could just correct the drawings to reflect, to keep it consistent throughout? The signage also was, is different than on the approved plans? You could address that? Ditto for the trash storage area? With respect to the menu board, those specifications that you submitted, that's what the current menu board is or it's a proposed...
No, that's what the current, in the June 12th, that's what the current is.
Okay, and then the other was to correct the compliance certificate to show the, what the conditions were and how you, that you complied with the conditions if you did. I think your curb cuts are also different from the last grant, so you might want to take a look at that and see if you're correct.
We'd be happy to.
Any other comments on this? No speakers on this item, so can you submit again on the 12th of November?
On this one, I'd ask you for permission to submit maybe a month later, just to give us time to get with the right sound person and to get that, I imagine it'll take a few weeks.
Okay, so do you still want to be heard in December?
Yeah, December would be fine if we could submit maybe in late November and if you have a hearing day.
Okay, so submission on the 26th of November for a hearing on the 9th?
That's great, thanks.
Item number 24, calendar number 4514 BZ, 337 99th Street, Brooklyn, Eric Palatnik.
Hello, Eric Palatnik. The outset, I'd like to apologize, when I spoke, we did not indicate in our papers that this is a legalization of a two-family. And when I heard your review comments yesterday and I called the architect and I had the conversation with him, he apologized to me. He said, "I didn't know how to treat it, it's a legalization, I didn't know what to say, I didn't know what to do in my paperwork." So he said, "I kind of presented it to you as if it was, you know, to be created." So I apologize, I should have pressed him or there was some miscommunication, he didn't know how to treat it. And it is in fact a two-family structure that we're seeking to enlarge. And we've heard your comments yesterday at the review session, and in addition to whether or not it's a two-family, there, which he answers yes, and there's an existing unit in the basement which we're seeking to legalize as part of this application. We've spoken with the architect and the unit downstairs is code compliant, it's a lawful unit, other than the fact that it's not legalized yet at Department of Buildings, but it can be and it meets all of the requirements. The architect did apologize, he made a typo on his rear yard. It is in fact 20 feet. I know that there was some confusion on his plans about that, we'll correct that. And he has counted the garage as floor area and has taken no mechanical deduction. So the floor area that we're proposing in the application includes the entire structure and with no deductions at all.
Does he have to count the garage as floor area?
I'm not sure if he has to count the garage as floor. I think a garage is, I'm looking, no, Louis Garfunkel shaking his head, no, no.
So I think your FAR...
I'll speak to him about amending that.
Yeah, and if he's done that across the board for what he thinks is existing floor area is, because that was a question that I had, that you, you don't explain why you're over on your floor area to begin with. If you, if you're permitted .75 FAR...
Right.
You're coming in at .105.
Okay.
That's your existing.
Right.
And you don't explain why .105 exists now. So if he's, if he's counting something he shouldn't be counting across the board, then maybe he needs to go back and redo his calculations from the very beginning.
We will, so that way they're clear for you. And going to the issue of the FAR, and I know there was another question on the larger, the other sites around, on Mr. Esmeusen's land use study. The other properties, we've gone last night and researched them, all of the other properties are in fact pre-1961 with the exception of one site. So I know the board had questions whether or not in the study, all the FARs were larger that we cited too. They're all pre-61. And I can get clarification on this building, whether or not this is, I have a feeling this was built at the same time and its overage on the FAR is a result of its pre-61 status.
But there's a rear yard addition on this site, so it's a, it's like a 1950 something building, but was that little rear yard portion built prior to 61 or was it built pursuant to permits prior to 61? But if it was built subsequent, then how could it have been a legal addition?
We'll find out for the board.
Okay, and then there was the, let's see, there is... Sorry? Yeah, just it's, well, the, just the, the way that the recon was worded, I'm not sure exactly how you deal with this now without going back to DOB, so. But the objection sheet, it's kind of done in that sort of old-fashioned way where you ask for the objection and DOB just writes exactly what you wanted them to say as opposed to DOB reviewing the drawings and checking that the drawings are in compliance. So it's not clear really that this, this proposal is in compliance otherwise, other than what you're asking for.
Well, that's all we were seeking his affirmation on, was that the two-car tandem parking is not permitted under the strict reading of the zoning resolution or it's ambiguous.
You gave, you gave us two drawings.
Right.
But only one drawing is referenced in the recon.
What he tried to do in the drawings, and again, this is probably just a little bit of confusion from the architect.
No, I got it.
Yeah, he was showing one with the enlargements, one without the enlargement.
And one without, so we need to know which one of those drawings the recon goes with.
I'll check with the architect for my discussion with...
It doesn't say drawings in the recon, it says...
No, it's just... I'll check with the architect. He had told me that the commissioner had told him that whichever one he needs for the BSA is sufficient for him to utilize for the BSA, for the BSA purposes. They weren't, he wasn't sure if he needed to show existing or proposed, but both were looked at and both have the same showing.
That's Ira's signature, right?
Yes, correct.
I trained Ira. Ira knows to initial the drawing that he's looking at, so.
So would you like us to bring it back to him and have him initial this?
I, yeah.
Which drawing would that be? We could do that. We could have him initial it.
Make sure everything was reviewed. Exactly.
Okay.
And because that's the other thing that, so there's so many plans in this application, it's hard to know which is the one that we're supposed to be looking at. That's why there's all that confusion about whether it's a 19-foot, 9-inch rear yard or a 35-foot, 4-inch rear yard. There's all this information all over the place. Pick a set of drawings, that's your proposal, let us know which one you have in mind.
We'll clarify it, I understand.
Right, make sure it's internally consistent and it matches your statement of facts. Okay, and then, go ahead.
The site plans I'm talking about, internally consistent, I look at these, you know, dimension, 100 feet for the length, and nothing ends up to 100 feet. And nothing is consistent from the first floor to the basement, second floor, so you should really do very careful on who does this do.
I'll have him correct that.
So, and then the other was with respect to the rear yard extension, to show, provide photographs to show what the impact of the 20-foot rear yard would be on adjoining properties.
We'd be happy to.
Okay, anything else, anybody else? No speakers on this item, okay, so what, how much time do you need for this?
Give us a few weeks to speak with the commissioner and get the initial on that, so if we could submit maybe in three weeks.
So submission on, submission on the twelfth of November, is that too soon?
No, that's, that should be acceptable.
Okay, for a hearing on the twenty-fifth.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-five, calendar number one fifteen fourteen BZ, eighty-five Worth Street, Manhattan, Eric Palatnik.
Hello, good afternoon again, Eric Palatnik.
Yeah, did anybody have any other comments on this? I didn't have any issues.
I just had questions about exiting out of the cellar, the egress.
Yes.
Whether the FDNY had had a chance to take a look at that and see if, I think he's got his legal egress out of the hatch from the cellar.
Oh.
I don't know, I'm asking the question, is that what he's considering?
Let me take a look.
His means of egress out, up the ladder, pop open the sidewalk hatch and.
You're talking about the rear?
Yeah, it is a.
Everybody will be really fit.
It's, it's part of the regiment, isn't it? I think it's the front, you see it?
Metal door for egress, unlockable from exterior. That's what you're speaking about, if that's, if that's an acceptable means of egress?
If, if that's what they're using as egress, it wasn't clear to me.
I'll find out, I don't know the answer.
And if they are, they need to prove that it's acceptable. I don't think it is.
I asked you to sit down on the elevator to be.
I'll find out.
It just wasn't clear also what, what we were looking at in the cellar in terms of the, you know, the PCE.
Oh, I'll, I'll bold the lines, it's the rear portion is the, of the cellar is, is.
And, and then show us.
Maybe a travel route from that, okay, happy to.
Exactly.
Okay, there are no speakers on this item, I think we could close this.
Thank you.
Okay, so, but we do need you to submit the response.
We'd be happy to.
To those questions, so.
We could submit in about three weeks, maybe follow the same schedule as the last one, submit on the twelfth.
Submit on the twelfth for the hearing on the twenty-fifth.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, margin of the close, sorry, I'm sorry, margin of the close.
Jason, uh.
Yeah.
You're lucky she laughed.
Vice Jay Higginson.
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown.
Aye.
Did you say chair from one?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Item number twenty-six, calendar number one twenty-two fourteen BZ, thirteen eighteen East Twenty-Eight Street, Brooklyn, Louis C. Garfunkel.
Good afternoon, Louis Garfunkel, applicant.
Did you attend the review session?
I, I heard over the audio.
So, okay, so you want to respond to?
Yes.
Our comment?
Okay, I will provide a, a study, I didn't, never got a notice of comments for this case, so I know in the past it's been asked for, but in this case I didn't get one, so I didn't provide it, I'll provide that, and there are some large homes on the block, there's, across the street there's a religious convent, a very large building, so we'll, we'll show that. There was a question about the distance from the garage, which was three feet, I know we do as-of-right cases in the building department, there's no building code that, you know, that, that impedes you from doing, you know, keeping three feet, maybe I could hear one foot or two feet, you might.
There's no building, you're not allowed to build in the rear yard of a residential property to fill it up like that.
There are zones where you can have a twenty-foot rear yard as-of-right, and this does come up.
Certain districts, okay.
Certain districts, and Ocean Parkway sub-district, I know of, you know, so I've never came across.
I think there's a TTPN about that, I think there's a TTPN about the three-foot, I'm looking at John to see if he agrees with me, concerning three feet between like garages or decks and another structure.
That sounds right, but.
Right, so similarly, if you're on a, on a property line, you have to pull back three feet unless you've got a non-combustible structure.
Right, that's.
So that may be where you're, you're thinking the three feet comes from, but, but because we asked the question, you might want to just do the research and find out.
Okay.
What you're. And, and we'd also ask the fire department to comment on firefighting capabilities when the firemen have to walk between these two buildings with three feet and big equipment and have access for firefighting, so we'll ask them to comment on that.
Okay.
But in, in terms of the, the study, I, I hope you understood, the idea is that you need to make a statement in your statement of findings, you need to, you need to support it, the statement that the building is consistent with neighborhood character, so that means images of the buildings on the block and their floor areas, but you can only use the legal, legally large buildings, not the ones that have illegally enlarged, right?
I understand.
So you have to do some research behind it.
Yes, okay, we've done these studies and I, I'll, I'll look at that.
Okay, because that, I believe that, that study was extremely unclear, it didn't have very much information on it, and the photographs were kind of not tied to the study, so you had photographs and then you had a map, and we couldn't really tell what one had to do with the other, so you really need to link it, because the whole idea of the presentation is you're telling us a story, you're making an argument, and we're not supposed to figure out what your argument is, you're supposed to make it, okay?
Okay.
And then, let me get on the front, huh? Okay, sorry, rear your extension, I think that was it, is there anything else? Oh, about the attic, yeah.
Yeah.
You described the attic as a small addition at the back, but in fact it's the entire length of the building and it's very far forward, and there seems to be only the center portion that's occupiable space, so not sure what the other portions are for, and that, I'm assuming those, I don't know whether you're counting them as floor area, I'm not really sure what you're doing with that, and anyway, it should be removed because it makes it look very massive and, and odd, in particular because this is half a house, so the design of the house isn't really intended to be treated in this kind of imbalanced way, so in terms of neighborhood character, you need to show us that treating a double, a single house structure like that, as if it's a, if it's a, as if it's really a separate house, is appropriate to neighborhood character, there's probably a better way to treat your attic addition, the suggestion of a dormer was made by both Commissioner Montanez and Ali Brown.
Well, it's not, you know, the, we weren't counting in this floor area like you're saying, but I do understand that, you know, the massiveness against the other house, I could find other homes that have done it, I'll, I'll look that over, but I'll also look, I'll look over the dormer, you know, try to make it more, at least in the front, to make the front aesthetic.
Right, so push back the addition so it doesn't.
It is in the, the, the actual area that we're counting is in the center, so it's not in the front, but the front, you're, I think you're focusing more on the front, which I can work on, and there's a piece in the back that's, like, let's say, let's say it's three, you know, it's a third, a third, and a third, you know, the middle third is the, what I'm counting is floor area, the other thirds are below eight feet, storage purposes, so I think the front I'll, I'll look at and.
Right, because the front pops, the roof pops up and it's a pitch roof instead of just a sloped direction.
Right, okay.
Right, I mean, you know, you're looking at, what are you doing to this house ultimately? The idea is that the house will still look like a nice place on the outside, you know, and not just with strange carbuncles on it because you want to make it bigger, right? So please look at the aesthetic of it in context with the neighborhood, don't forget there are neighbors who are looking at your house, they should be happy.
Okay.
With the results. And then there was a question that Commissioner Higginson raised about the flue, that perhaps your flue is too short, that it needs to be raised.
Yeah, you show a new flue, and I think you gotta have to be three feet above your highest ridge or something like that.
Yep.
So it actually sticks up a lot higher than you think.
It should, it should be changed to stick up, to go up high, right, okay.
I noticed that on your existing plans, your garage is eighteen feet long, and on the proposed plans, your existing garage is sixteen feet long.
Shrinking pencils.
Well, well, we.
Were you gonna chop off part of the garage that is gonna be modified?
Yes, that's what, that's usually what ends up happening.
It just says existing garage.
On both, on both existing and proposed. Okay, all right.
That was a good catch.
Gotcha, okay.
And by chopping off that two feet, is that how you're getting the three feet between the extension and the?
Yes.
So the car fits in there now with a sixteen-foot outside width?
The length of the car would fit, I mean, my, my client is happy with that, but the building department may have an issue, you know, there's always this, this juggle because if, if it doesn't hold a car, then you can't have a, you can't have this permitted obstruction, so sometimes I had, they ask me later at the building department to cut it in half, actually, make it, because.
Make it in half?
Meaning cut it, let's say bring it down to ten feet, or make it into a shed, I've had cases like that.
Like a carport as opposed to an actual.
Well, a carport would be to take away the entire garage, but when my client says, you know, I'd like to have it half or a shed, so the building department agrees and says, okay, push it all the way, push it ten feet towards the backyard.
Then you just park the car outside?
Oh, then where does he park in this, in this case, well, in certain cases they have a driveway, in this case, he has a six-foot-ten driveway, and he does not have an easement, so that would be, right, that would, that would, could come up as an issue, then I'd have to take the whole garage off and say, and we'll show the parking in the back, if, if that would be.
So kind of here's the thing, you know, when we, when we review this, if we were to agree that the twenty-foot rear yard is acceptable, it's not an approval of the garage, so you have to understand that it's.
Right.
Right, that you're on your own when it comes.
That's what I'm saying, I know, when I, when I go back to the building department, I can get three different objections, you know, I can get, you know, file a demolition for the garage, make it into a shed, and then, like you're saying, then they're gonna, they're gonna come up and say, well, where do you park your car if they're, in this case I have a six-foot-ten driveway, and the other neighbor also does, so these are pre-existing conditions, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so there are no, no speakers on the side, but I would like to hear from the fire department if they've had a chance to take a look at this next time, you know?
Yeah, I just sent it to them yesterday.
Okay, so, okay, so we would like you to come back with the responses to those questions, right, and submit, and make a submission.
Right, I need about two weeks, but should I wait for the, to hear from you from the fire department? You're gonna cal, well, I'll submit it and then the calendaring.
You don't need to wait for the fire department, you can submit your information, fire department will submit theirs, that may mean that there's more iteration?
I'll make it quick.
Okay. Mr. Skidudo.
Good afternoon, Anthony Skidudo, Fire Department. I quickly review it because I knew there would be questions today, let me just approach it in this manner, this type of building, in an emergency situation, the fire department will usually approach from the front only, and we will use the driveway in terms of side access. The, the access to the rear would be in that rare instance, which we hope would not happen, is that if someone was trapped, trapped in the second floor and they could not get out, and there would have to be a rear, a, a rear entry via portable ladder, I, I'll have to go through some calculations to see if that three feet really would allow us to get to the portable ladder, make the turn necessary, but the, the initial response is that I don't think that the, the current proposal will really be a major objection, but we'll confirm it in writing, just to let you know, like I said, in terms of the, the overall firefighting effort, we really wouldn't be using the rear yard in this particular type of building anyway.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so then could you submit on the twelfth of November?
Yes.
For a hearing on the twenty-fifth?
Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
This concludes the October twenty-first public hearing of the Board of Standards and Appeals.